County council members out at the barbecue. We counted to at least ten, which means we should be having a quorum momentarily. But we're asking council members and staff to come on inside. As soon as there's ten members present in this room, we can get started with our meeting. Good evening again, everybody. Welcome again to the Lakeview Terrace Recreation Center. For those of you not familiar with this community or this corner of the valley, this is Lakeview Terrace, in the northeast and of the San Fernando Valley, and a community within the city of Los Angeles. Welcome to the meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, September 18th, 2002. This is an official meeting of the city council, even though we're not in City Hall, as many people have come to know. The city council has made it a priority to, on a regular basis, get outside of City Hall and hold council meetings in communities, many times in the evening as we are here today, or excuse me, this evening, and make ourselves more accessible to all constituents of the city of Los Angeles. I want to begin tonight's meeting by asking the clerk to please call the roll.
Burnson, Galanter, Garcetti, Grul, Han, Holden, Labange, Misakowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley, Thomas, Weiss, Zine, Padilla, thirteen members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The council is officially in session. And I want to begin by making a few introductions. First, to my left and your right, your council member, Wendy Grul, up on the stage. And I know she has prepared a few special recognitions that we'll get to in a minute. Joining me on my left here on the stage is Councilmember Hal Burnson. And from your right to left on the first level of the stage is Councilmember Eric Garcetti. Councilmember Janice Han. Councilmember Nate Holden. Councilmember Tom Labange. Councilmember Cindy Misakowski. Councilmember Nick Pacheco. Councilmember Jan Perry. Councilmember Ed Reyes. Councilmember Jack Weiss. And Councilmember Dennis Zine. To my far right, we have the Assistant City Attorney, Gail Weingart. Our council clerk, or excuse me, our vote clerk, Judy Clark. And to my right, documenting every single word spoken during the meeting, is our council clerk, Maria Konstrencic. Before we begin with the presentations for tonight's meeting, I want to read the small print of the agenda today. Copies of this evening's agenda are available in the lobby at the rear of this auditorium, along with other council district contact information. We encourage you to take that information home with you. The council will consider the items listed on the agenda in numerical order. Some of the items may be approved without discussion. However, any item may be called "special" by a council member. If an item is called "special," it will be held on the desk and brought up for discussion on an individual basis after the remainder of the items on the agenda have been acted upon by the council. Members of the public who wish to speak on any of the items are requested to complete a speaker card for each item they wish to address the council on and present the completed cards to the sergeant-at-arms. Speaker cards also are available in the lobby. The council will also provide an opportunity for the public to speak on public interest items not appearing on the agenda but within our jurisdiction that will take place towards the end of the meeting. Testimony shall be limited in content to matters which are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. When the debate on an individual item is completed, I will ask the clerk to take an oral roll call vote, since we don't have our computer system with us. The votes shall be taken in alphabetical order. Every member present must vote for or against each item. There are no abstentions. The clerk will announce the result of each vote. For this evening's meeting, council members requesting to address the council, please raise your hand and I will recognize you in the order as requested. And when I do recognize you, I ask that you use the microphones in front of you to address the public and the council. And before beginning with the formal items appearing on today's agenda, I do want to turn it over at this time to Councilmember Wendy Grul.
Thanks, Dennis. My fan club, see? I just want to thank all of my council colleagues for being here tonight. And hopefully you got a little flavor of Sunland Tahanga and Lakeview Terrace and Shadow Hills and the Tuna Canyon community that is so precious to all of us. And if you drove, I know many of you sent emails telling us how to get here, which was to make sure we drove the five to the two to the two-ten, so that all of you could see the beautiful scenic corridors that are preservation, that we're trying to preserve here. And so, you know, Alex did. I also promised my council colleagues the best barbecue they've ever had. And I think you all agreed with me. It was wonderful, wasn't it? Yes, wonderful. I think we had food for three hundred people and we started to run out. So we had a great turnout. And I call on the barbecue boys. And we're going to make sure when they're finished that they're still cooking out there, that they come in and we appropriately recognize them for their hard work this evening. They do this out of the goodness of their heart. It's not really a business, it's one that they like to do in the community. So I'm pleased they're here. Not long ago, after I was elected in April, I went to Alex and said, "I want to have a council meeting in my district." We haven't had one in years here. It's a great community and I'd like to show you all off to my council colleagues. And so I am so pleased that we are here in Sunland Tahanga tonight and Lakeview Terrace, all of you here tonight. What I'd like to do is, we have several, we have some presentations this afternoon that we'd like to do for people who have made a difference. And we're going to do that after we have a presentation and our scouts who are going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'd like to go ahead and begin our program with the scouts that we have here today from Troop 1317, Jessica Dreher, Tessa Blanchard, and Brianna Christensen, Brownie Troop 876, Erica Blanchard, Boy Scout Troop 50, Chris Sipe, and Kevin Gilbert, and the Cub Scout Pack 50, Joseph Horn and Mike Horn, if they could please do the colors in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Color guard, present the colors. All those uniformed, right-hand salute. Anyone else, put your hand over your heart. Color guard, post the colors. Color guard, salute.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Two. You may be seated.
I'd also like to point out, and I think Mary Lee Tierney is here, that each of the council members received in their little packet, Hotels for the Hopeful, early history of Sunland, California, and thank her for contributing that tonight. I'd like to call up now Katrina Canyon, who is Sunland Tahanga's poet laureate. Her most recent accomplishments include the Virginia Allen Young Careers National Representative, the Shouting Coyote Poetry Festival, an organized monthly competitive poetry series called The Poetry Slam, and like to introduce her for an inspirational poem. Katrina.
Thank you, Wendy, for that wonderful introduction. And I'd like to thank the council for having me here. I wrote a special poem as a gift to you all. It's called "The Code." "As we meet together, may we always be mindful that decisions which seem the size of a grain of sand can have the impact of a boulder. When faced with adversity, may we never sit quietly in fear, but rather stand boldly with courage. When we set forth on our day's work, may our deeds always be selfless to the greater good of those we serve. When we voice our opinion, may we never be so wrapped up in our personal agenda that we forget our need for empathy. And though we may represent a single group, may our actions work to the benefit of all." Thank you.
We're very proud of Katrina in Sunland Tahanga, so I appreciate you coming tonight. I'd also like to make a few other introductions of people who serve our city so often, day in and day out, and are really a wonderful part of our public service. And if I could either have them, they're probably not sitting, they're standing back there, but representatives from our police department. Deputy Chief Ron Bergman, Captain Pitcher, they're in the back there, wave your hand. Captain Proctor from Organized Crime Vice, Detective Rick McElroy, and Detective Harry Edo. And I just want to thank them all. Now, the people that we harass often, all of you, are our senior lead officers. And all of you know them, but I want to highlight them as well that are here. For the Lakeview Terrace area, Jose Castellanos, Jose. Our newest senior lead officer is Julie Carpenter for the Tahanga area. Here's Julie, should we... Also, Jules Alvarez from Pacoima, in the back, all right. And last but not least, for Sun Valley and our Stonehurst area is Michelle Rodriguez. All right, Michelle. And two other people that some of you may or may not have seen, but they're from our city attorneys and our neighborhood prosecutor program, which has been extraordinarily successful and a really wonderful resource for us. Deborah Bridenham, neighborhood prosecutor, who's here, Deborah. And also Tony Cutres from the Clear Unit, the Gang Unit. So we're pleased to have both of them. Thanks, Tony. Also, those of you who met many of our city departments, that were out there for resources and information about the services that we provide. And if I'd just like to have, we had various departments that were represented. If I could have them just stand, Public Works, we had Street Services, Sanitation, Streetlights, Building and Safety, Aging, Animal Services, Transportation, DWP, and MTA. If you all could stand, that would be great and say thank you. They may still be out there. Okay, and I'm going to introduce a little bit later the general manager of the San Fernando Valley MTA, who you may have read about in the paper, the new manager out here, David Armijo. And we're going to have him say a few words. But right now, I'd like to ask Council President Padilla, oh, there he is, for a presentation. He's going to begin our presentation this evening for a special person in this community.
We're going to do a duet for you. Just kidding. No, we do have a special presentation this evening. Thank Council Member Grul for allowing me to sort of barge in on the agenda a little bit. Ed Bates, get up here. We have some, I think, sad news for the community, good news for Ed, but sad news for us. His last day of work is going to be this Friday, September 20th. So we wanted to take this special opportunity in the community to publicly acknowledge Ed for his 34 years of service to the community and to thank him for all that he's done. For those of you who may not know, he, as I mentioned, joined the city in 1968 out in, I think it was Westchester Recreation Center, but made his way through the years into the San Fernando Valley, beginning in Woodland Hills and eventually here in the northeast San Fernando Valley. And he's been really a pioneer and a champion of recreation and park programs and an innovator in thinking with his basketball programs that he helped establish that have been some of the largest in the city and I think around the country. The youth basketball program, at one point grew to more than 120 teams. The youth baseball program grew to just less than 100 teams. His opening days and many of the events that Ed's organized have brought out the likes of Tommy Lasorda, Ron Say, Steve Garvey, Ross Porter, several members of the Dodger Organization. Not for Dodger events, for kids and family events here in the city of Los Angeles. Here locally, he's been part of the Hampton Dam Master Plan creation, the LA Kids Mobile Unit Program, and the first skateboard park built in the San Fernando Valley. We have a lot to be thankful and appreciative of Ed for. And as I mentioned, we wanted to take this special opportunity, not just in City Hall, but in the community where Ed's work has benefited us the most, to thank him and let him know just how much we appreciate all his hard work over the years. Councilmember Grul and I have presented this resolution in his honor. But before we let him speak, Wendy?
I just want to add my two cents worth. It's kind of a sad day because just being elected and now Ed's leaving us. And so I hope that he will come back and visit, but I have found even in the last five months that Ed was really a treasure for this community. His commitment was, this was much more than a job. This was his life and his community. And I think all of you can, can feel that. And from all of your applause, know that he is really a wonderful asset to the city and will be sorely missed. So I echo the comments made by Council President Padilla and thank Ed for all of his years of service and look forward to, hopefully that you'll come back and volunteer every now and then.
Thank you very much, Council members Padilla and Grul.
The best dressed city employee.
It's been, it's amazing to receive an award for 34 years of work at a job that you love to do every day. So I say thank you to the council members and the council at whole and to the city of Los Angeles for giving me the opportunity to work for 34 years. I greatly appreciate it.
Ed and I were just talking about how timely it was that we had this council meeting here in, in Sunland Tahanga, the Lakeview Terrace area. We've all been talking a lot about community involvement and the importance of community and the spirit of that community involvement. And if you've been to any of our other council meetings out in the community, we try to recognize as many people as we can. And it was difficult for us to kind of say, "How do we do this?" So we decided in our staff to make sure that we identified those community organizations such as our new neighborhood councils, our residents association, improvement associations for their hard work and the work and challenges that we have together. And before I do that, I was very remiss in not acknowledging my staff who have worked so hard on this event tonight. And I, I'd like them all to, I don't know if they're all standing out here, but I have Arturo Gonzalez and I have Dale Thrush and Allison. And Janelle, who was the leader of the pack today, and Chris Miles and Claire Bartels. Where's my chief of staff? She's hiding or working somewhere. Claire Bartels and Malconian and Neary and Mary, Mary, is Mary here too? She may be outside. And Vince Maffei, my district director. So I just want to say thank you. Someone said to me that the qualities of a good elected official is to hire good staff. And one last person, Pat Davenport, how could I have forgotten? So I hope I didn't forget everyone. And Candy Campbell, who is not here, she's at Sherman Oaks meeting tonight for me. So Candy, she, she would have been here otherwise. So what I'd like to do is we're going to acknowledge each of the individuals or organizations and ask that you come up. And then I want to take one, hopefully, big group shot. And maybe we could get the council members to stand up here and we could take a, a shot with all of them as well. So with no further ado, Arturo's going to help make sure we do this. We're going to have Beth and Alan Diamond from the Studio City area. Are Beth and Alan here? Okay, they are not here, so, but they have been active in the Studio City area. Lawrence Hannah. Great, Lawrence. And the Valley Glen Neighborhood Council. Also Hillary Lacroff from the Northwest North Hollywood Neighborhood Council.
Representative is here.
Representative is here, I think, even though Hillary may not be here.
Come over there.
Okay. Before, as we do that, as he comes up, if I could have everyone who has worked with you in your council stand up so we can acknowledge those individuals that are present. And this woman I'm also following around, Valley Glen Neighborhood Association, Asta Chris. Also from the Valley Neighborhood Council, we have Vicki Birch. From the Cabrini Village Homeowners Association, Paul Polacarpio and his group, if they could stand out. Paul, I think Paul's here. Or someone from the group? And one that we're all familiar with, the Foothill Trails Neighborhood Council. And I think Bart Paul is here, I saw him. Yes. Quite the celebrity. Also from the Northeast North Hollywood Neighborhood Council, Jose Roy Garcia. From the Van Nuys Neighborhood Council, Jim Leahy. I thought Jim out there, too. From the Canyon Area Preservation, Steve Crouch. And the next person is someone that is a legend for me, Polly Ward, who started the, the Studio City Residents Association and the farmer's market there. And another group you're all familiar with, the Sunland Tahanga Neighborhood Council, Ken McAlpine and all the members of the Sunland Tahanga Neighborhood Council. And last but not least, the Shadow Hills Property Association, Elektra Kruger. Okay, so our photographer there, Ron Butcher. Do you have, yes, this is our photographer who comes to all of our events. Ron Butcher, do you want to tell us how you want us to be? Can we, you know? He's always a comedian, too. If my council members could stand, we'd love to have them part of this. I promised my colleagues we wouldn't have too many presentation lights, so we get down to the real nitty-gritty business. There are three or four particular issues that are important to this community that we're going to talk about tonight. The scenic preservation corridor in, in this area, we're talking about street racing and the YMCA and Commerce Avenue. But before we do that, we're going to have a special treat from Seal Berman, who is going to sing a song that she wrote about Sunland Tahanga. And before, as she comes up, I also want to comment, we had a hearing yesterday in the Plum, that's Planning Land Use Management Committee for City Council. And we had incredible turnout from this community. And I have said all along that you all are the most active community in all of the San Fernando Valley, and that's a good thing. That's a good thing. And we solve problems together. And I appreciate that and I appreciate the give and take. So I just want to, as, as soon as Seal's done, we're going to start with the business and, and introduce the representative from MTA. But I just wanted to add that, that I am so proud to represent all of you. And let's give a big hand for Seal, who has a song she's going to sing for us.
It's a real honor to be here. Nestled in the foothills of the St. Gabriel Mountains, close to all the things I've grown to love. There's nothing like the view, looking off into the valley as the morning sun rises above. In the terrace, Lake, Lakeview Terrace. A very special place where you can see lots of nature's little secrets. And if you take the time, you'll be amazed at what you'll find. Cowboys and accountants, housewives and movie stars, people of every race and every creed. Share mornings in the country with the city in the distance. This is Lakeview Terrace, yes indeed. It's the terrace, Lake, Lakeview Terrace. Oh, a very special place where you can see lots of nature's little secrets. And if you take the time, you'll be amazed at what you'll find. Horseback riding in the canyons, mist upon the hillsides. Hey, friends that take you where you want to go. Oh, and if you have a problem, we'll find someone who knows the answer. Neighbors wave hello where you go. It's the terrace, yeah, Lake, Lakeview Terrace. Oh, a very special place where you can see lots of nature's little secrets. And if you take the time, you'll be amazed at what you'll find in the terrace. Let me hear you say Lakeview Terrace. Lake, Lakeview Terrace, yes. A very special place where you can see lots of nature's little secrets. And if you take the time, you'll be amazed at what you'll find in the terrace.
That was wonderful, Seal. She called today and said she had this great song about Lakeview Terrace and could she have it, would love to have her present tonight. So appreciate you doing that. We're, we're ready to start our business and I'd like to introduce to you David Armijo, who is the General Manager for the Metro San Fernando Valley Sector of the MTA. For the past six years, he has served as Director of Operations for the Orange County Transportation Authority, where he managed their bus and, and para-transit services, MetroLink commuter, and the Taxi Administration Program. During his tenure, he had ridership increased by 40% and commuter rail ridership doubled. So we are so pleased to have him here. I know that the bus was here and a lot of people had questions. So now you'll know exactly what he looks like and who he is once he speaks. And anyways, David, we're glad to have you. And if you would, please say a few words.
I'll make sure this is working. Thank you very much and good evening. And thank you, Councilmember Grul, for the invitation, the opportunity to address both the council as well as the community tonight. I'm pleased to tell you, as the General Manager of the San Fernando Valley, while I stand here alone tonight with a couple of my staff members with me, I actually do represent over 1,100 employees that are working at two of our operating divisions here in the San Fernando Valley. We have a service very close by here in Sun Valley and another operating division over in Chatsworth. What I'm pleased to say is in our first two months of rollout, since we began in July 1, we've been very successful in beginning a long process, because it took six years for me to do those things in Orange County, it's going to take far less time to do some of that here. It's a long process in which we've begun the process of actually meeting with the staff, meeting with the community, and holding a series of community meetings that we've just completed in the last 30 days, and beginning a long process of doing a service assessment of really looking at what we can do to improve upon the transportation services that we offer here in the San Fernando Valley. We have already begun making changes, some service initiatives on some of the routes, many more changes will go into effect with our next Many more changes will go into effect with our next service change that's scheduled in December, and we hope to come back to the community within the next three to four months to actually do a series of public hearings in which we'll come forward with some new service initiatives that we would hope to get in place by early next June or even next fall. So we're really excited about the opportunity to be in the valley. We have a lot of ideas, and we've been getting a lot of ideas from the community, and we're continuing to do that. We'll be getting out more actively, working with the city governments and their staff. We've been working very closely with the LA city staff. In fact, I have a meeting tomorrow morning. We're talking more about Warner Center and some initiatives and some plans that we have. We have a lot of exciting things coming out in the valley. The Bus Rapid Transit will be in operation within the next three years, so we're looking forward to that. We have a north-south study going on right now, so another number of other initiatives going on in the valley. And so we're looking forward, for the behalf of the MTA, to try to make a difference and help everybody in their transportation initiatives here in the valley. So with that, thank you very much.
David, we're expecting the same 40% increase now, you know.
Yeah, we need to redo that bio. But I think it's possible. I think there's a lot of opportunity here in the valley, so let's look at this in a year or two and see where we are, but I think you're going to find, it's going to be an exciting time.
And David, I mentioned him earlier. I remember the woman who talked to me about the importance of On Foothold Boulevard, more service on Foothold Boulevard for some of our seniors, so I think there were some of the, so he's heard it from the horse's mouth, so to speak.
Thank you for that. In fact, we are meeting with a number of senior groups as we speak, so there's a number of initiatives that we'll be looking forward to in the coming year.
Great. Well, I know we just, I just had the chance to meet with you last week and invited you kind of short notice last week, but appreciate you being here tonight and all of your staff. So thank you very much, David.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you very much. We're ready to begin with this evening's agenda. Madam Clerk, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Gruel moves, and Ms. Perry seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Gruel moves, and Ms. Misakowski seconds.
Before beginning of the regular agenda, Mr. President, there are several items to continue. Items one through five, a request from Building and Safety to continue those matters to October 29.
Members, we do have requests to continue items one through five. Seeing no objection. Items one through five, there's a request to continue these matters by the department. So unless, unless there's an objection, items one through five are continued to October 29. Next items, please.
On the regular agenda, item number seven is confirmation of Mr. Tom Schiff to the City Planning Commission.
Is he here? As he's coming forward, members, item number seven is now before us. Public hearing haven't been held in committee.
Over there at the speakers.
Into the hot seat, into the hot seat. Public hearing has been held in committee, and we do have a recommendation for approval. Are there any members wishing to speak on the confirmation of this commissioner? Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Mr. President. I had a personal meeting with the nominee, and I found him to be very qualified. He's not only a resident of the San Fernando Valley, but very committed to proper planning in the city of Los Angeles, and I think it's another recommendation by the mayor that is worthy of merit, and his contributions to the Planning Commission will be very beneficial to the valley and the entire city of Los Angeles. And it was heard in, I believe, Plum, or was it Plum? Plum Committee. I believe there's a recommendation, but as a constituent of my district, the third district, highly recommend that approval be granted and assured he will be a wonderful commissioner for the planning development within the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you, Mr. Zine. Are there other members wishing to be heard? Mr. Holden.
There's an item on the agenda tonight relative to, item six, relative to establishing the San Gabriel Valley, San Gabriel Verdugo Mountain Scenic Preservation Specific Plan. You are not participating in that because you're just being considered tonight. Have you read the recommendation?
No, Councilmember, I haven't.
You will be on the Planning Commission, is that correct?
Yes, Councilmember.
And that project is in this area, right? City 2, right?
Yes, Councilmember.
And you are coming to this area tonight, right?
Yes, Councilmember.
So you want to impress all these people.
I simply haven't had the opportunity to be given the material to consider this matter yet, Councilmember.
Not consider, but just, if it happens tonight, you know, you'd be looking at it for other areas at some later time, right?
Yes, Councilmember.
You are interested in this job, right?
Absolutely.
All right. Well, do you guys like him?
All right, we'll go along with you.
I promised the group and the council member that I'll give this the utmost consideration and take into account the feelings of the community as well as the council member for the district.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to thank Mr. Schiff. He did come before Plum. I want to thank you for your good service. The experience you bring to the commission is something we really need. I just want to thank you for volunteering your time and looking out for the city of Los Angeles. Thank you so much.
It's my pleasure.
Mr. Schiff, did you wish to add anything before we continue?
No, simply that I'll listen well and do my utmost to be fair and to earn a reputation for thoughtfulness in my capacity as a commissioner.
Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you. I was just going to give Mr. Schiff that same opportunity. We've had the chance to look at your resume, and I know all those who sit on the Planning and Land Use Committee had a chance to have some interaction with you, but if you might just give us a few short words of your sort of philosophy, your view, your, how you, what skills you will bring to the Planning Commission in terms of trying to look at all sides and being responsive to community.
I think there's a micro answer and a macro answer to your question. The micro answer, on a day-to-day basis, I think it's the obligation and responsibility of a commissioner with the kind of responsibility that goes with Planning Commission, to not come to any particular matter with any preconceptions or prejudices, but truly to listen, to read the file thoroughly, to drive by the site, to listen closely to the community and the community's representatives, and to be fair to the utmost and thoughtful to the utmost. And on a, on a daily basis as a commissioner, that's what I would hope to do. As far as a larger view, the city is going through an evolution right now, an evolution of responsiveness to various communities. The population of Los Angeles continues to grow. We have increasing relationships with the communities around us, and that's something that the council is making excellent efforts to turn its attention to. And I think that one of the exciting things for me as a Planning Commissioner will be to be part of that process, of a collaborative process with the community and with its representatives, to learn how to be, notwithstanding the fact that we are a huge city, and in many respects, in my view, the capital of the world, to find a way to be very responsive to the individual flavors of the communities that make up the fabric of the city. And that's a work in progress. It's something where we'll try various things, and we may find that there's better ways to do them, and I hope we'll all have an open mind in that respect. But I would hope that we, as a Planning Commission, would be a part of a process of making each community feel like we're an important part of the city and we're part of the whole, and that we're working together. And I hope I would also help encourage the different parts of the city, that fabric, to work together, that people will keep in mind the spirit of the sum of the parts being much, the whole being much greater than the mere sum of the parts.
I appreciate that answer, and I think one of the most important things you said is, particularly for a member of the Planning Commission, is not only to take into consideration what people will say, the testimony you'll receive, and to read the reports, but I can't tell you, for the nearly 30 years that I've been either a staff member or around City Hall, that the most important thing about a local planning decision, I think, is driving by seeing it with your own eyes. You'll get a lot of input from the community, from all sides, but when you really see it, feel it, see it in the context of that neighborhood, it really comes alive and makes the decision, I think, that much more vivid. So I very much appreciate that comment and your answer.
The bottom line, and then I'll be quiet. The bottom line is, with increasing population and increasing traffic and so on, we have to find a way to maintain and improve a great quality of life. That's the bottom line.
Ms. Gruel.
Well, I'm pleased that you're here tonight and that you did come before Plum, and I hope that you will stay tonight, as long as you can, to hear tonight about the scenic corridor preservation plan and from the constituencies, because it is an important issue for us. And if you have an opportunity, and you can learn a lot tonight, too, as well, and just appreciate you being here and look forward to working with you on the Planning Commission.
It will be my pleasure to do so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Other members wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, we are ready for a vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Burnson, Garcetti, Gruel, Han, Holden, Labange, Misakowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Weiss, Zine, Padilla.
Thirteen eyes.
Congratulations, you're approved.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please send this matter forthwith. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item notice for public hearing, item number six.
And we do have a number of speaker cards on item number six. We will call this matter special. Next items?
Next items for which, items for which public hearings have been held, items eight through 13.
Members, items eight through 13 now before us. Public hearings haven't been held in committee. A motion would be required to reopen the public hearings here at the full council. Are there members wishing to call any specials? Item 12 is called special by Mr. Garcetti. Item 13 called special by Mr. Holden. Are there any other specials? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items.
Burnson, Garcetti, Gruel, Han, Holden, Labange, Misakowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Weiss, Zine, Padilla.
Thirteen eyes.
Those items are approved. Next items, please. Forthwith on item number 10. Next item.
Next item is, Mr. President, items for which public hearings have not been held, items 14 through 21.
Members, items 14 through 21 are now before us. I do have cards on items number 19 and 20.
And 21, I'd also like to call special.
Ms. Gruel calls item 21 special. Are there any other specials? Members of the council, any other items to be called special? On the balance of the items, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council, so we shall deem the public hearings open and closed. We have called special items 19 and 20 and 21. On the balance of the items, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Burnson, Garcetti, Gruel, Han, Holden, Labange, Misakowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Weiss, Zine, Padilla.
Thirteen eyes.
Those matters are approved. Next item.
Going back to the items called special, item number six was called special for cards from the public.
Item number six is now before us, and there are a number of speaker cards submitted on this item. This is the public hearing for item number six. We'll turn it over to Councilmember Gruel to conduct the public hearing portion of item number six, and I think as people can understand, given the hour and given the number of people wishing to speak, we would certainly appreciate your brevity and the focus of your comments. Ms. Gruel.
Great, thank you very much. I first want to remind everyone, I don't think, though, that you need reminding, that this plan was begun in the 1980s and by the late Councilmember Howard Finn, and I don't know if Ann Finn is still here or not. She was here earlier. She is one of our treasures of well, and she may have left already, but we'll give her a smile. This has been a project that has been a true community effort, and what I'd like to do before we actually even have the presentations tonight is ask all of those individuals who have participated in the community process of this and the community group of designing the scenic preservation corridor to please stand and for us to acknowledge them. This has been a plan that has had many drafts. I also want to take this opportunity to thank the Planning Department, who has taken input, had many public hearings, Bob Sutton and Rita Shack, Diana Lawrence and Dan Scott. If we could have them stand as well and say thank you to all of them. Just briefly, for those of you that are not familiar with, this is the scenic preservation corridor that helps protect our prominent ridge lines, those that, councilmembers that you drove by on your way here, and the beautiful scenery and the ability to see the tops of those ridges. And this plan is historic tonight. This is the first time that this type of scenic preservation corridor plan has ever been adopted and approved, and it is a model, I think, for our city, not only for what it has produced, but also for the community participation in this effort. And I am so excited that we are this close to getting it approved. For those of you that were present yesterday at the Plum meeting, there was a few items that we wanted to make sure we had total agreement on. We call it the Unified Plan, and I think, council colleagues, you probably got a lot of letters and calls and emails. Janice Han is demonstrating all of the letters, and Eric Garcetti, all right. This is an active community. So what we're going to do, if it's okay with you, Mr. President, is to ask the department to give a brief overview. Before they do that, just to make clear two additions that we're going to make to the report that was adopted yesterday. This has been drafted by the community and supported by our Planning Department. And as Alex mentioned, after that, we will have the, call you, all of you up. We do have a two-minute time that we ask everyone to speak within, and if you speak less than two minutes, you will be really, you know, well-received by this group up here. And so just to officially give the changes, the proposed addition of Section 7B of the San Gabriel Verdugo Mountain Scenic Preservation Specific Plan adds to the end of the first paragraph. "The Deputy Advisory Agency shall require that lots transferred pursuant to the density transfer portions of this specific plan be situated on portions of the property with less than a 15% slope, unless such property does not have sufficient area below the 15% slope portion of the property." Item 2, which is the proposed addition of Section 3B, which replaces the item we approved yesterday, new second sentence reads, "However, it is the intent of this specific plan that its provisions regarding grading or development shall control within those parts of the plan area that are designated as prominent ridge line protection areas, and that the grading or development provisions of the Sunland Tahunga, Lakeview Terrace, Shadow Hills, East Los Angeles, Tunica Canyon Community Plan, included but not limited to Footnotes 4 and 7, the slope density ordinance and the hillside ordinance shall control outside the areas designated as prominent ridge line protection areas." And this was drafted, I have to thank the community, thank you. As of 4 o'clock this afternoon, they met together, and thank you for that. So that would be my amendment, and I'd now like to turn it over to the department to give a brief overview of the scenic preservation quarter, and then we'll have public comment.
President Padilla, honorable members, I'm Daniel Scott from the City Planning Department. The San Gabriel Verdugo Mountain Scenic Preservation Specific Plan area is located in the northeast San Fernando Valley. The plan area covers much of the Sunland Tahunga, Lakeview Terrace, Shadow Hills, East Latuna Canyon Community Plan area, and the area of the Sun Valley-Latuna Canyon Community Plan. No specific plan in the city of Los Angeles goes as far in the protection and preservation of a community's hillsides, ridge lines, and equine-keeping areas as this plan does. As was stated yesterday at committee, slope density is the controlling factor for development in hillside areas over 15% or greater slope. The specific plan adds a further layer of protection, moving allowed densities away from prominent ridge lines. On July 25, 2002, the City Planning Commission considered and approved the San Gabriel Verdugo Mountains Scenic Preservation Specific Plan with several modifications, and instructed the Planning Department to study the possibility of prohibiting the top of any structure from being higher than the lowest point of the 50-foot protection area without inhibiting property rights, and to study whether the gaps in the prominent ridge line protection areas located near Verdugo Crest Line could be closed. In response to the commission directive, the Planning Department has closed the gaps in the prominent ridge line protection areas located near Verdugo Crest Line by adding additional protection areas on the north side only. We have also added additional unofficial trails in the Lakeview Terrace area that were proposed by the community. In response to the commission directive to study the possibility of prohibiting the top of any structure from being higher than the lowest point of the 50-foot protection area, the Planning Department recommends that area, the Planning Department recommends that all of the existing 50-foot vertical prominent ridge line protection areas be increased to 60 feet, and that structures built within five vertical feet of prominent ridge line protection areas be limited in height to 36 feet. And that the ordinance language be clarified to state that where prominent ridge line protection areas are shown on only one side of a ridge line, structures built on the side without a prominent ridge line protection area should not be allowed to break the silhouette of the protected ridge line. In response to requests for clarification of the ordinance language by Council District Two, the Planning Department further recommends that Section 7B transfer density be amended to preclude with respect to lot averaging the creation of lots under 20,000 square feet. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Okay, so with no further ado, we're going to, and I'll call up at least three people at a time, so you're ready to get up there. And I can't read your last name, Fred, but it's Fred Falau. The next is Lloyd Hitt. And the third is Bill Ike. Sorry, Fred, I was mispronouncing your name.
I say Fred Falau. Do I have to say my address and all that?
I'm sorry?
Address and then say everything else?
Address would be great, thank you.
9360 Reverie Road in Tahunga.
And probably need to talk into the mic, I know it's kind of hard for everyone to hear, so.
Okay. I'd first like to support the additions drafted today, and I also would like to remind council and Plum that as specific issues and proposals come to you later on concerning specific developments, that the same care that was shown by Councilman Bernson on the Duke Development--
You want to speak?
--issues last year be taken later on for specific development proposals coming to them. I wanted to, again, thank the council for, or for Plum, for the amount of care that was taken on that. I would hope that that same care will be taken in the future. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Fred.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome President Padilla and the City Council members. Thank you for coming. Welcome to our valley surrounded by the San Gabriels and the Verdugo Mountains. They've stood there for about 12 million years, and I think it's time we stop screwing I hope you enjoyed your ride up here, especially on the 210 when you're between those beautiful mountains and the twisting road. And I hope that all of you will support our plan. I want to thank the Commission for accepting the amendments that we just worked out at four o'clock. I think we finished about five o'clock today, and that is really fast. So we thank you for coming, and we hope we welcome you back again.
Yes, my name is Bill Ike. I reside at 9647 Stonehurst Avenue in Sun Valley, and I'm the Land Use Chairman for the Shadow Hills Property Owners Association. I want to thank you all. We waited for this for 20 years to preserve the ridge lines for eternity, but it was worth the wait, all right? And I want to thank all of the members of the Planning Department, the members of the community who spent countless hours, Wendy and her staff, Dale Thrush especially. I want to thank Councilman Bernson and Councilman Reyes, because a year ago, we came to Plum with a plan that was not perfect and needed work. And even though we were not represented, because Councilman Wax had resigned, they kind of took us under their wing, they supported what the community wanted, sent it back, and it was revised, and much to the benefit of everybody. The Planning Department did a wonderful job. And I just really want to thank everybody who's worked on this. It's so important to everybody, and I really appreciate your support of this plan and the amendments. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And all of you know, Bill's done a great job of working through all of them, I appreciate it. Our next speakers are Elektra Kruger, Mary Benson, and Tim Sauer. Sure.
Mr. Reyes wants to speak, too. My name is Elektra Kruger. I am currently serving as the--
Speak into the microphone, Elektra, sorry.
Okay. I'm currently serving as a president for the Shadow Hills Property Owners Association. On behalf of the community of Shadow Hills, I do urge you to support the San Gabriel-Verdugo Hills Scenic Preservation Plan with the proposed revisions to the Plum report, specifically to the revisions to Section 3B and 7B. Following years of negotiations between the Planning Department and the foothill communities, a unified plan for the scenic preservation of the San Gabriel and Verdugo Mountains were essentially agreed upon. So now, speaking for the residents of Shadow Hills, I do relate to you the great interest in retaining the viewshed of the mountains and the semi-rural open space lifestyle to which we in these communities have become accustomed to. The populations in the area are growing, we understand that, housing is needed, we understand that, and we don't argue with that point. We do only ask that you can assure that future developments take into account the natural beauty of this area, and take that beauty into account in their future plans. I do see many hillsides in the cities around us where homes are like pocketed into the mountains, and they really don't take away from the general aesthetic beauty of those hillsides. But then there are also other hillsides where houses are just packed, side by side by side, like matches in a matchbook, and they just indelibly scar those mountains. It is this preservation plan that wishes to avoid that kind of a scarring of our mountains. And basically, I just do ask for your support, and thank you for your time. Good evening, President Padilla and council members, and welcome to horse country. Hopefully, you took the opportunity to come via the 210 freeway, as requested, and you now realize that our open areas here in the east valley are an environmental treasure to be preserved, not an urban vacant lot to be improved. A year ago this month, the council voted to accept the conservation element of the City of Los Angeles General Plan. That element highlights a commitment to encourage the conservation of the agricultural equestrian community. That encouragement has to come from you. This community and the horse industry that supports it cannot survive without your action. You have taken measures to preserve the film industry. Please consider that the horse industry is the same type of element in distress in the same light. I have prepared packets for you that contain two of the dozens of free equestrian publications. These two publications specifically relate to this area, and I hope that you give, it gives you some idea of the scope of the local horse industry. These are, there are hundreds, literally, of local businesses and dozens of nonprofit organizations that focus on the horse. A lot of horse people don't live here. They may be our friends, but they're not our neighbors. Their horses live here. They're our customers, and without them, many of us would not be able to afford to keep our own horses or the property they need. The not-yet-certified Foothill Trails District Neighborhood Council that you've heard of doesn't have a single bank or a gas station within its boundaries. It doesn't have a high school or a junior high school, it doesn't even have a supermarket. What it does have is four of the largest retail establishments and major employers in the area are stores serving the horse industry. Boarding, riding stables, and many other industries employ many more. Everyone here derives some sort of benefit from the open space and the riding trails in Hanson Dam and the surrounding areas. Not one dime is budgeted to recreation parks for trails in Hanson Dam. Many equestrian businesses have relocated outside the city limits and outside the county of Los Angeles. Today, you are taking a very important first step in the long overdue process to preserve the environment. We all hope we won't have to wait 20 years for you to take the next step.
Good evening, council. My name is Tim Sauer. I live at 9423 Wheatland Avenue in Shadow Hills. I'm a prominent ridge owner, and I kind of feel like David versus Goliath here. I love my mountain top, I go up there every day. It is a ridge that, you know, has fabulous views, could see, it's something that is part of my life, where I go up and plant trees, it's my own beautiful beautification project that I take a lot of pride in. And I've worked with the planters and trying to get certain exemptions, and they've listened to me, but there is some issues that do bother me that I, our ridge line is actually probably maybe 60 feet from the top would hit our pool deck. So we're in a little bit of a unique situation. This is a full-on taking of our property, and we, as a very minority amount of ridge owners, I mean, I feel that, you know, if we're going to bear the cost of this entire beautification project, you know, that we shouldn't have to be, you know, paying property taxes and having to support it solely ourselves. This is, it seems a little unfair to me. I ask that the council would at least consider a property tax exemption for us ridge owners. And in my particular case, I would like to see an exemption written into this ordinance that spells out that the east side of our ridge, you know, that I can enjoy and develop according to my liking without having, you know, to request that I need to, you know, plant a certain tree or put a certain picnic table and, you know, and have to worry about my neighbors, you know, causing trouble with it. I appreciate your time, and this is a community that I do love and enjoy and would, you know, want to preserve, but not at the cost of us few. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sauer. And I know that the Planning Department has worked with you on some of the issues, so we look forward in the future to try and address some of those as well. The next speakers are Stephanie Valencia, Greg Valencia, and Tracy Jensen. And just a friendly reminder to everyone, a two-minute time period.
Councilmembers, my name is Stephanie Valencia. I live in Sunland at 10249 Nassau Avenue. I hope that the City Council moves forward with the scenic preservation plan in such a way that will maintain our ridge lines and keep our wonderful rural environment intact.
My name is Greg Valencia. I reside at 10249 Nassau Avenue, Sunland. Councilmembers, it will be beautiful. I closed my public comment remarks at the Plum meeting yesterday using that word, beautiful. Yesterday, Tuesday, Plum gave their approval to the scenic preservation plan. We have the council here tonight to vote on that matter. Tonight, please listen to those from our community, the residents who have struggled and have been intimately involved with preserving a beautiful part of our city. Those residents are here as our horse owners, artists, multi-generation families, as our neighborhood business owners, strong community ties, and a future Los Angeles that you, my council, will tonight advance plans for. This future Los Angeles I speak of is what Los Angeles looked like when Los Angeles first began. You have the ability to create a living museum displaying our city's ancestors' lands, from the Gabrielino Indians to everyone of us here today in Los Angeles and future generations. If development must come, I ask the council to very carefully dissect our city attorney's ordinance phase of this land use issue. Wording is, wording is the most valuable tool that this living museum can use to live and maintain itself. All of the city-sponsored meetings and hearings that I have attended stress the ultimate fate of any issue is how it is worded, which is why I speak to you of beauty. I must give credence to the rumors that have existed since I have been involved in this land use issue, that the city, in its final wording, will empower those that wish to exploit this last part of our city's heritage. What I can believe is just the opposite. I ask the council to generate the words that will make the San Gabriel-Verdugo Mountains Scenic Preservation Specific Plan the model for preserving more than our heritage. You can make it the model for ensuring beauty. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tracy Jensen. I live at 9667 Wheatland Avenue in Sunland. And I have lived in this community my whole life, and I do love it, and I love the property, and I love the hillsides. I am, I have been, had many concerns, and a lot of them have been addressed, and the revisions are very good, for the most part. My objection is, I think, as Tim voiced, is that if you will take a portion of any privately-owned property, such as the top of my hill, or Tim's, or anybody else's, and say, okay, it's preserved, you can't build on it, you can't alter it, because everybody wants to look at it and it's beautiful, that's great. What I do object for is that I still have to own it, and I still have to pay taxes on it, and I think that this particular item does need to be addressed. Thank you for your time, and it's an honor.
Thank you, Tracy. Thank you. Our next three speakers are Robert Shealy, Jack Rubens, and Roberta Cole.
Thank you, councilmembers, for coming tonight. My name is Robert Shealy. I reside at 10614 Hillhaven Avenue. I'll make this short and sweet. I wish you will help us protect our beautiful ridge lines, and I urge you to support the scenic preservation specific plan as the community desires. Thank you.
Thank you, Molly.
Good evening, Mr. President, councilmembers. My name is Jack Rubens, Shepherd Mall, Richter and Hampton, 333 South Hope Street, Los Angeles. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of Whitebird, Inc., which is a large landowner in Latuna Canyon. We've been involved in this process for two and a half years, along with the residents and two councilmembers. And you've heard from the residents today who support this, but the really remarkable achievement that Councilwoman Grul was able to achieve was not only bringing the residents together to support a unified plan, but with a few exceptions, bringing the landowners to the table and coming up with a compromise that worked for everyone.
The community gets a lot of credit for that, too, because they, not often do the community and developers sit down together. And I know it's not always pleasant, but you were there and are stronger person for it, aren't you, Jack?
I think we're all stronger for it. And I particularly like to recognize not only the councilwoman's efforts, but also Dale Thrush's. If you have any combat pay in the budget, he ought to get it. And finally, although the councilmember Grul has already thanked them, I also want to recognize the heroic efforts of the Planning Department, in particular Bob Sutton, Dan Scott, and Diana Lawrence, who were bombarded with many different viewpoints on what the plan ought to have and not have, and were able to come together and give us a document we could all support. So thanks to everyone for their efforts. Thank you.
Cindy wants to make a quick comment. Not often do the community and developers sit down together, and I know it's not always pleasant, but you were there and are stronger person for it, aren't you, Jack?
I think we're all stronger for it. And I particularly like to recognize not only the councilwoman's efforts, but also Dale Thrush's. If you have any combat pay in the budget, he ought to get it. And finally, although the councilmember Grul has already thanked them, I also want to recognize the heroic efforts of the Planning Department, in particular Bob Sutton, Dan Scott, and Diana Lawrence, who were bombarded with many different viewpoints on what the plan ought to have and not have, and were able to come together and give us a document we could all support. So thanks to everyone for their efforts. Thank you.
Cindy wants to make a quick comment. Cindy wants to make a quick comment. We need her, Cindy's microphone on. Wait, we can't hear you, Cindy, and I know maybe Tom's works.
Knowing Jack Rubin and his involvement with the Los Angeles Conservancy and preserving a lot of our heritage, it's very nice to see you here in a different capacity, but preserving some of that same heritage, just not man-made. So I appreciate your efforts as well.
Thank you, council member.
Good evening. I'm Roberta Cole, a resident of Los Angeles for 45 years...
Roberta, pull down the microphone. You're a little shorter than everybody else there.
Is that good?
That's better.
Okay. I'm Roberta Cole, a resident of Los Angeles for 45 years at 10,040 Wentworth Street in Shadow Hills. I am a member of the scenic preservation plan since 1999. The completion of this endeavor has taken many invaluable hours in the development since 1982, when the first plan was submitted. This historic and futuristic scenic preservation plan evolved as a result of concerted effort on the part of committed community members, city planning, and the council district's leadership. Appreciation goes to the late Council Howard Finn for his great vision to preserve and protect the natural and cultural resources of these communities for the present and future generations, to Frank Eberhart from City Planning, to committee members of 1982, to mention a few leaders, Anson Burlingame, Tina Icke, Sylvia Gross, and Phyllis Hines. A special thank you goes to the councilwoman, Wendy Grul, for picking up this landmark endeavor and moving forward with it, Arlene DeSantis, and Dale Thrush. And then at the City Planning, all staff involved, Bob Sutton and Diane Lawrence. And finally, the coordinator of the Scenic Plan Community Committee, Bill Icke, who has given beyond the call of duty. I'm sure you're aware that there cannot be further delay on this plan in view of the extensive efforts made since 1982 to assure environmental balance with plan development. The current plan has made a quantum leap in relation to the 82 version. I urge you for full support to vote for the plan with the proposed provisions from the Plum Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next, I'm going to call all four of our last speaker's names now. Teri Haake Church, Elaine Brown, Nina Royale, and Carol Locasfort.
My name is Teri Haake Church. I live at 9738 Commerce Avenue in Tahunga. 20 years ago, I stood on the top of those mountains with Joel Wax and Arlene DeSantis and listened to both of them say, "We have got to preserve this." And we've been fighting ever since. I thank everybody who's been involved in this fight from the beginning till now. And I thank you because I know that you are going to pass this for us. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Please pass the motion, vote yes. And I thank everybody that's been thanked, everybody in the room, everybody who's here. And I'm so excited, I can hardly contain myself. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Carol Locas from the Valley Horse Owners Association, which is located in Sunland, Post Office Box 113. Well, I know this started over 20 years ago with Howard Finn, Joel Wax continued it, and now Wendy Grul. So I wish to express my very deep and heartfelt thanks on behalf of thousands of equestrians and thousands of residents who enjoy our semi-rural lifestyle, and also to make possible that the horse industry survive in this area. Maybe many of you saw the gangs on the front page of the Daily News a few years ago, a few days ago. And in this area, between Wentworth, Foothill, Glen Oaks, and Sunland, we have no gangs. I was so surprised. And I believe very strongly that intertwining nature, recreation, and animals, here we happen to have horses, there are all kinds of animals. I believe that that is a successful combination for communities. And I would love to work with city planners. I have many ideas on possible developments that could intertwine these aspects in true urban renewal, where truly people need a break from serious inner-city problems. I would be very interested to work and give my suggestions. I need to go buy software where I can start designing buildings. Anyway, I'm assuming that all of you are supporting it and will vote yes. And many thanks to everyone who made the unified plan possible. Also, thank you to the developer who agreed and met with the community members. We greatly appreciate that gesture and the work with the community. Thank you again.
Thank you, Carol. And our last speaker is Nina Royale.
Good evening, Council, and I thank you all for being here. I'll keep it really short. I want to say thank you to all the members in our community, the Browns, the Heights, everyone, I know their husbands and wives have missed them. And I do want to say this, that it shows what we can do as a community if we put our minds to it. We all worked together, everyone that attended all the meetings, went to all the Plum meetings, and especially Elaine Brown and Teri Haake and Steve Crouch, all of these people, this is what they did. This is the result. I know that you all are going to pass the motion and I'm hoping that we do have the controls that when things come up to maybe challenge those motions, that those will be taken care of as well. Thank you again for your kindness and consideration.
I have, some of my council colleagues would like to comment as well on the scenic preservation corridor plan. And I just want to take this opportunity, though, to say, all of you made this possible. When I was running last year, I heard hundreds and hundreds of times about the importance of getting the scenic preservation corridor plan approved. And it was a great team effort and I want to particularly acknowledge my staff, Dale Thrush, and give him a big round of applause for all of his hard work.
I think he wants a raise after this, though. I'm not sure. I'd like to, in the following order of the council members, Eric Garcetti, Janice Hahn, Cindy Misakowski, and Ed Reyes.
Thank you, Councilmember Grul, and thank you all for your activism. I think when Councilmember Hahn and myself held up these letters, it is activism and democracy at its best. I know that city planning can be a long contentious process, but certainly for us, when you get these letters, I had over 55 that were emailed, faxed, sent to my office from people like Jerry Piero in Sunland, and Steve Crouch in Tahunga, and Elaine Brown who just spoke in Sunland. It really does make a difference for us to see a community and people who are united behind this. As I rode over the past, unfortunately in a car, not a horse tonight, you do see the beauty that we have. And I represent the smallest district in the city of Los Angeles geographically, so where people are much, much, much more densely packed together. But I know that those people care every bit as much as you do about preserving our open space, about preserving our land, and making sure that that is a resource and a treasure for all Angelinos. So thank you on behalf of them for your work as well. A lot of you have been very familiar with the plan itself, so in reading through it, you know, there are folks who just watch us on television, who flip through and see Channel 35 and may not know some of the details. And I just want to point out some of them that I found particularly impressive. The ridgelines obviously are the crowns to these incredible passages. I mean, that's how they seem, that's what they look like. And what we're doing is hopefully today preserving them. And I think also your use of making sure that we have official trails and even our unofficial trails within this plan, I think, are very important as well. For those of us who are looking at transportation as multimodal, we usually think of that as meaning cars and bicycles and walking. We also have to remember that there's also horses as a part of that. And as much as we do transportation policy, we should plan around that as a way of getting around. And thank you for making sure that's in there. We also have guidelines that really ask us to look at architecture and design in an environmentally sensitive way that actually fits in with the environment. So whether it's the ways that you looked at flags or rooftop structures, and know that in here it does exempt solar panels, so we do hope you will take advantage of the DWP programs, because you have such great sunlight out here, to help add to the grid with solar paneling. But that really is something that's sensitive to the look for everybody who drives through or lives here as well. I know there's been a lot negotiated, and this may be a little bit contentious at the very end to propose an amendment, but I was noticing on page 12 as well, that under the flags, this is C-210, that all flags are not allowed to be flown except for those of the United States of America, the state of California. But if we do our jobs tonight, I hope you might support us in adding the flag of the city of Los Angeles, should anybody want to fly that as well to the ordinance. So I'm going to propose that as a friendly amendment. Lastly, in closing, I just want to say, what you have done here is really establish a standard, something that we can take, whether it's in the most densely populated area of Los Angeles, where we have a small sliver of open space, say in Council District 1 or 13, where Ed Reyes and myself represent along the LA River. You have now established a standard that our Planning Department and we as council members can use to make sure that we have this sort of sensitivity to the environment and save what is truly a treasure for each and every one of us. So thank you for that work from the bottom of my heart.
Before Councilmember Hahn speaks, I'd like to acknowledge why they're here in our presence, Brian Burns, Rick Lenman, Joey Tabby, Eddie Dudley, and Phil Tabby, the Barbecue Boys, who did all that hard work tonight. Thank you so much. Everyone enjoyed it. I told my council colleagues that I was going to have the best barbecue and that I was going to outdo all of them, and you made me proud. So thank you very, very much. Dennis wants to comment here.
I want to comment on the excellent barbecue, but I was very impressed that if you ran out of food, there was a cow that was out there grazing. And I don't know if that cow was for extra food or what, but those of you who were out there saw, there was an actual cow there grazing in the yard. So my compliment, you did a great job.
Now, don't tell Paul Hull from the 4H that we were thinking about that cow. Anyways, thank you all so much. We appreciate it. And we're going to move forward. Janice, your turn.
I have take home. Thank you, Councilmember Grul, and it's just a great thrill to be in your district tonight. And it's really an honor, actually, for us to get to vote on this issue tonight here. And I'm, I consider myself a city girl. And the only drive I do on a daily basis is from San Pedro to downtown Los Angeles and back to San Pedro and back to downtown Los Angeles. And I'll tell you, driving out here tonight was absolutely beautiful. And it just... And I usually am tired at the end of that kind of a long drive, but this drive actually refreshes your spirit. So it really was beautiful. I'm glad you all gave us the route to drive tonight. But I, I'm not going to comment on the specific plan except to congratulate you for your hard work and the fact that you have come with a consensus here tonight. But I do not want to underestimate the letters. You know, we got letters. And you know what? We got them, we read them. You know, they weren't all form letters, though many of them were very different and mentioned a specific aspect of the plan or something you wanted me to know. I did, Roberta, you sent me two letters, so I don't know if you thought I needed a little extra. I wouldn't get it on the first time. But, you know, I just want you to know that that is meaningful and that that is important and that you should never underestimate the power that you have with your government. And when you take the time to have your voice heard, believe me, it is heard. And I think that's what's really powerful about this whole issue tonight, is that you made your voice heard to all of us, not just to your council member, but you took the time to write each and every one of us. And I want you to know that that really made an impression on me. I think what we're doing tonight honors, you know, so many people. Certainly it honors the late Howard Finn, who really began this effort in 1982. It certainly honors all of you who have worked so hard and tirelessly and did not lose patience. Maybe you did, but you're here tonight. And it certainly honors the future generations. And I think that's what really you have done. You have thought long and hard about those that are going to come after you and what this is going to mean to them as well. So I congratulate you and I'm happy to support the community's version of this specific plan.
Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you. Let me not be redundant, but it was not only fascinating, I'm sure many of you know that not only did we get letters, but we got computer-generated pictures. So if those of us were not able to drive out, saw firsthand what you see day in and day out, and I want to thank Elaine Brown for adding that particular touch. It was very, very impressive. But overall, the plan is impressive. I know many of you here, and when I was a staff member, I was around when slope density was adopted in 1977, 25 years ago. And we said how great that was in preserving hillsides, because for the first time, it recognized that density in our hills should not be the same as density in our flatlands. And yet before that time, they were considered as one and the same. But Howard Finn, and let me give credit to Councilmember Bernsen, they said slope density might be fine. Slope density takes it so far, gets it out there, and sets new, very low-density lines, but it didn't go far enough. We really needed to take that extra step on prominent ridgelines, because what we were seeing is even with slope density, developers were going in and focusing on the most prime, highest spot on the lands, leveling the mountains and putting that density up on top. And you've got plenty of examples, we've got plenty of examples throughout the city of that. So this finally matches up the low density with the land that needs to be preserved. And although it took you 20 years to get there, although it may not have been worth the wait, the sophistication of what you've now been able to come up with, as I think Eric said, and clearly, let me give Dan Scott credit, too. His first words were, "This is the most far-reaching scenic preservation plan in the city," I dare say, "in the state." It's an incredible effort. And because you took the time, the care, and now have this sophisticated new plan, it is something that we will be able to replicate in the city. Many of you may be aware that in 1973, we adopted something called the Mall Holland Scenic Corridor Specific Plan, but it didn't have these teeth in it. We now need to go back in all of our prominent ridgelines, and we've done great planning and we have on those plans prominent ridgelines, but we didn't know what it meant. We didn't know what it meant, how to go about preserving this. You've shown us that. Your struggle for 20 years is going to be a much speedier solution and effort and plan for throughout the city and all of our mountain lands. So let me thank you on behalf of all the other communities and neighborhoods that are mountain-oriented, have mountains and hilltops in them, that I think because of your having led the way and shown us this plan, is going to be terrific. I particularly like the speaker who talked about creating the living museum, recognizing property, not rights, but recognizing something that's been there a whole lot longer than all of us together, and it's going to be there, thanks to you, a whole lot longer in the future. So congratulations on an incredible plan, incredible work of pushing this that next level, which I think we are all going to value, but your community is going to value and appreciate the most. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Councilmember Ed Reyes.
Thank you, Councilmember Grul. When you came before us and Plum, when there was no one representing you, I took to heart the fact that, as Chair of Plum, working with Councilmember Bernsen, it was our obligation to make sure that the community's voice was heard, that you had representation, especially when you have such a dramatic project that has historic significance, and knowing you invested over 20 years of work into this. And for that, I applaud you for your passion, for your articulation, and knowing that this was an incredible feat, that it required the attention that a council member needed to give it. And I'd like to congratulate Councilmember Grul for stepping up and providing that stewardship. But just as important for me is that I understand that Los Angeles is a basin, and what connects all of our communities is that we have a rim of mountains and foothills that's interconnected, not only the Verdugos, but you also have the Santa Monicas, that believe it or not, reach into the urban center. I have ridgelines in Mount Washington, in Lincoln Heights, in... I have ridge lines in Mount Washington, in Lincoln Heights, in Montecito Heights, edges of Ligon Park, Silver Lake. And at one time, I dare say, they might have been just as pristine as what we see here today. So I think Councilmember Finn knew what he was doing when he saw what was happening in other parts of the city. I dare say, we still have a chance in the urban center, but it also highlights the fact that we are one city. And as one city, we can continue to preserve that which still remains. And as we look at our watersheds, as we look at our flood control issues, and we start looking at our ecosystems, let's understand that we have a few more million people migrating into Los Angeles in the next five, 10, 15 years. And so what we do today is to have something for my grandchildren and the people I'm growing up with, and leave them a legacy and understand what is natural. And I want to thank you for giving our generations that opportunity by preserving these hills. Now I can take a 15-minute drive over here and take a walk through these trails and let my kids know what it feels like to be around horses and to be near a cow and say, yes, did this happen in the city at one time? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Well, Ed, I offer to you and all my council colleagues a horse ride. We all help us put that together. Any council member wants to come, we'll go and show them all the horse trails. How does that sound? Yeah. Councilmembers, I'm. Dennis, you're up.
Thank you, Wendy. The emails I received, along with my colleagues, I read those emails. And it's interesting that when I was with the LAPD, I was assigned to Motors, and I remember traveling up in the Sunland Tung area, traveling through La Tuna Canyon and seeing the beauty. And I've seen the fires, and I've seen the devastation that's taken place on occasion. But I've always been impressed with the community pride, the community interest in this area. And clearly, your success is seen in your efforts since 1982. And it's sad that it takes that many years to come to this point where you have the assurance, you have the security to know that the beauty of this region will remain the same. I was in my district earlier this afternoon in Canoga Park, and I traveled up to Soto and got on the 118 freeway into a traffic jam. And then from the 118 freeway, I finally got on the 210 freeway, and it opened up to the beauty, to see the ridges, to see the openness. And I can see how, not that I support this, but I can see how some people say, "Let's tear down those mountains, let's build homes, let's bring more people, let's cause congestion, let's cause more of what we see in other areas." And I'm fighting the same issue out in Amundson, in my district, adjoining the West San Fernando Valley, where they want to build over 3,000 homes and demolish the beautiful scenery we have there. You've got the support, obviously, you've worked hard for it, you've succeeded with it, and this will last way beyond our lifetime into generations to come, where Los Angeles will still have some preserved history. Because if we look at this valley, and if we look at the population, we look at the estimation expansion, where are we going to put everyone? Well, it comes to the point where we can't house the entire world in the city of Los Angeles or the San Fernando Valley for a variety of reasons. And I know we're concerned about affordable housing, we're concerned about transportation, we're concerned about infrastructure, but we have to be also concerned about nature and preserving what we have left that hasn't been decimated and turned into developments and asphalt areas. But I was so impressed, as traveling down the 210 freeway, I could finally break through that traffic. And it's an area that many people from the valley travel to get downtown because of the congestion on the 101 freeway. They find that the 210 freeway affords them that opportunity to link up with the two to get into downtown. And I want to leave that area, one of the last remaining areas that we have here, where we can have the cows out in the pasture at the rec center, where we can see the people on horseback riding. And it just reminds me that I learned to water ski at Hanson Dam many, many years ago. That's where I learned to water ski. And when you see a city council that's listening, that's responding, that's taking the movement forward, and I traveled to Hanson Dam recently, they now have aquatics there, they now have a different environment. So my compliments to you. Your emails have been answered, your prayers have been answered, you can enjoy the fact that I'm sure you're going to have this unanimous vote tonight to preserve this. And it's hard work, but it pays off in the end. And I just want to emphasize that this city council, we see the members here tonight from all over the city, there's 15 of us, that are concerned about this community and other communities of the city of Los Angeles. We are listening to you, we are responding to your needs, to your concerns, and that of our beautiful community. And I wish you well and the happiness and the trails that you have as you travel on those ponies, up and down those trails. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tom LeBange, and then followed by Hal Burnson.
I thank you very much, and thank you, Councilmember Gruel. It's great to see that you bring this to us, and you complimented your staff so well, and Dale, and all the work that they've done. I'm just pleased to see this happen, because as an Angelito, I enjoy, as all of us do all parts of the city, and this city council has met throughout in various locations, from the sea at the Port of Los Angeles, the largest port in the United States, out to the West Valley and all over. And it's so important to come out and to enjoy and love Los Angeles and enjoy, love your community, Salamanca, the East San Fernando Valley. But I want to compliment you on fighting the great fight for the future that you've done, because people do appreciate this. More and more, our challenges on land use will be to preserve what's here, and you've captured that with this plan that we will vote to approve here. But I also want to salute Councilmember Wendy Gruel, because she, other than Janice Hahn and Cindy Misakowski, who represent us at sea level, she represents us at Mount Lucan at the highest point in the city of Los Angeles. And this plan is Mount Lucan, which is 2,875 feet, and it's also our central control for much of our communication system throughout. So that's so special, too. I hike every day in Griffin Park, and I look up at these beautiful mountains, the fortunate location of Mount Hollywood, which is only 1,865 feet. When we look out at the Great San Gabriel Mountains, and when it's a clear day, of which there are many, we can see four great national forests, including the backdrop to Los Angeles, the Angeles National Forest, which is the largest and busiest national forest in our country, in the United States, our Angeles National Forest. And then to the west, we see the Los Padres National Forest, to the east, the San Bernardino National Forest, and to the south, the Cleveland National Forest. But all of this, what you've done, will only enhance the value of our community. I congratulate each and every one of you. It's a treat to always be here, and congratulations, and long live those who fight the good fight to keep the open space open for others to enjoy. Thank you.
Councilman Burnson.
I wasn't going to speak tonight, because this is really Wendy's night, but I'm just going to say a couple of words. First of all, I had the pleasure and the honor of serving with Howard Finn on the Planning Committee when this plan was first initiated, and it's been a long process. When the Santa Monica Mountain Plan was approved, which took many, many years also, the scenic corridor, one of the problems we had was when they originally started dealing with preserving hillsides, was that people were only concerned about reduction of density. Well, that was part of it, that was half a loaf. They never considered saving the ridge lines. And I said at the time, even though I supported the ordinance when it went through, that we need to deal with the ridge lines and preserve those. But we got three-quarters of the package now, and I think we still have some improvement to do. We still need to limit some of the development on the slopes. Some slopes, over a certain percentage of slopes, should not be touched at all, and I think that's the next step, but we won't get into that this evening. I also would be remiss, Howard Finn is a legend, and Anne, of course, in this area, but I think I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the fact that Joel Wax, I think, represented this district for a number of years. And was very supportive of the very thing that you're going to get approved tonight. So thanks to Wendy, she's the one that gets the final completion of it, so she gets the credit. And I want to compliment our planning department, who did a great job on this thing. I mean, it was not an easy thing. Let me tell you, when you're dealing with property owners' rights, as well as with the community needs, it's important that you be fair and reach some kind of consensus. And one of the things that you will have in the future, you will not have your foothills and your ridge lines looking like they do in Glendale, with everything stacked on top of it.
Thank you. And Councilmember Nick Pacheco also wanted to make a few remarks.
First of all, good evening. I just wanted to first ask all of you to join me in hissing my colleagues who make fun of me when I ride my horse and wear my chardo every year at the Mexican and the Pez Day Parade, because I can tell you, Dennis, you learned how to ski, I learned how to horse ride up here at Hanson Dam, and I really appreciate the great experience up here. And I'm a kid from Bohr Heights, and being up here is a whole different place. You really feel that Los Angeles has everything for everyone, and I think part of today's message is that we are preserving something that my children can enjoy. And I'm telling you right now, I have a great time riding the horses over here. You really forget about your problems when you're on your horse and just riding around the hills. So I do support all your efforts, and we'll be voting in favor of the motion.
Thank you.
If I can clarify to Councilman Pacheco, we love that he's on horseback, it's just tough being in the car behind him in the parade.
Did you want to say something? Councilmember Nate Holden might like to say a few words.
When Dennis Zine was nine years old...
Thank you daddy.
I was toying my boat from Pasadena to Hanson Dam in 1959, skiing. Pretty good, I did. Water skiing. Now, it tells you about how long I've been around. But Mr. Burnson said some things that I think should be noted, that the Santa Monica Mountains in that area, because of encroachment of development, is something that we all have to be concerned about, given the fact that it's been built up enough, not only in that area, but in this one as well. When I first came out here in 1989, running for mayor, I made a pledge, a commitment, when I saw those beautiful mountains, those hills, those valleys, I fell in love with it. And I said, "It should never change." And even though I had some other things to do tonight, I wanted to be here to vote for confirmation of this plan. Now, I got to ask the city attorney a question. Specific plans, do we ever have on the agenda from time to time amendments to specific plans?
Yes, we do, Mr. Holden.
Oh, that's a danger. Let me tell you something. They sew the boundaries of the plan, they black around the ridge there, and that's all-inclusive, but you can have an amendment. Some developer sometime can say, "I want to do a project in the area." And then you have to get an amendment to the plan to do the project in the area, and that means you've got to come out and fight it, because if they get eight votes or something like that, you know, there goes, it's almost like you never adopted anything. Do you understand that? So I'm saying to you, beware. I am leaving office because of term limits. You should have voted against that stuff. We've got to correct that. Even though I'm leaving office, you give an opportunity to vote to abolish term limits so you can keep some experience around. But I'm saying to you that those kinds of things can happen, and you have to be aware of it. Now, how do you safeguard these hills? You better start planning like right now. I think that what's before us now in our environment, in the city of Los Angeles, is bad guy, good guy. It's taken 20 years to get where we are today, because there is a bad guy maybe, the good guy will prevail, as tonight. But tonight, be mindful of what I'm saying. I am leaving office, and I'm sharing some information with you. The fact of the matter is that what you have today may not be what's imposed on you tomorrow. And learn the lesson from what they learned from other bridges and mountains and so on in preservation of areas and specific plans. We change those almost like every day, but certainly not with your concurrence, and you will oppose it. As long as I'm there, I will not vote for any amendment to change anything in this So in order to safeguard them there hills, did I say it right? Okay, the correct answer. In order to safeguard them hills, I would suggest to you that you initiate and immediately put on a ballot whereby, if an attempt is made to amend the plan to provide for additional development which would encroach on the area that you want to preserve, then it should not be a vote of the council, but a vote of the people. Yes, you can do that. I'm just giving you the benefit of my legislative experience, and with that, I have nothing else to say. Forewarn is forewarn.
We are, all of my council colleagues have had a chance to speak, and as you can see, it looks like, hopefully, the vote's going to go our way. But before we have that vote, I want to echo some of the things that Mr. Holden said, which is, and I know all of you will be here, day after day, making sure, you know that you have a council member that's going to be similarly watching all of the things that go forward to fight for your rights and fight for the protection of those areas. So I want to take this opportunity to thank all of you for all that you've done. Thank you, and all of my colleagues, all of you. So I'd like to ask for the city clerk to open the roll on item number six.
And that would be item number six, as amended by your motion and Councilmember Garcetti's. Burnson, Garcetti, Gruel, Hahn, Holden, LeBange, Misakowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Weiss, Zine Padilla.
Thirteen eyes.
Yeah. Woo-hoo. I know Councilmember Padilla wants to say something real quick, too.
So, yeah, Mr. LeBange, that matter was sent forthwith. If my colleagues and the public will indulge me just for a minute here, I didn't speak during the testimony before the vote, just for not wanting to be repetitive, but I wholeheartedly agreed with everything that was said about the preservation of the natural resources and really the city's responsiveness to the desires of this community. It's just a shame that it took so long. But I did want to make a comment that, for many, maybe a little inside baseball, it's something about the internal politics of this council, the 15 people who sit around a horse three times a week and discuss and debate issues and vote on items, and a lot of that conversation really takes place in committees. It's also an observation, and I think a note of how the city is changing this council, in part because of term limits, for good and for bad, is changing also. Last year, with the majority of new members coming onto the council, I was elected president of the council. And when I became president of the council, there was a lot of new members, and we changed a few things. We've had some growing pains this last year. One of the things that was changed was the chairmanship of the Planning Committee. And there was some concerns expressed at that time about the new chair of the Planning Committee and what message that might be sending about having someone who wasn't from the valley, but someone who was from the inner part of the city of Los Angeles, the urban core of the city of Los Angeles, as chair of the Planning Committee, and whether or not the committee and this council as a whole was going to be as sensitive and cooperative to the, what call it, slow growth of the open space concern and the other points of view to the development of this city. And I really want to, in addition to thanking all of the community members who participated in this process, in addition to thanking Councilmember Gruel as a representative of this district and her leadership in bringing all of this together, and all the members of this committee, in particular, thank Councilmember... of this committee, in particular, thank Councilmember Reyes. Because as he mentioned, as he mentioned, for a significant portion of this process, this council district was unrepresented. And he could have easily have disregarded the views of the people who came to testify and the people who have most been impacted by a decision. But he took your testimony to heart and I think worked with Councilmember Grul upon her election and other members of the council and did what was best by the community. And although on the one hand we're singling it out, I think it speaks well of the council as a whole, as it is changing and as it is evolving because of term limits, maybe because of changing politics, that we are a council that maybe works a little bit more together than in the past and is listening to community concerns a little bit different than the past. And I think it's just a great example of how the city and city government is continuing to improve. So, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to add my comments. I think Ed Reyes has done a terrific job taking over as chair of the planning committee. I've served on it for many, many years. I think it's going to be in good hands when I leave. And I think he did a terrific job on this particular plan as well as other things. So my hat's off to you.
Thank you. Well, we are, we're going to move on from this agenda item, but again, this is your success, your congratulations tonight, your accomplishment, and you make me really proud to represent you. So, thank you very much. And I was, I was pretty sure with all of your letters and your calls and emails that we would get approval today. So I have a cake in the back that is of the scenic preservation quarter prominent ridge line. So on your way out, I hope you'll stay for a while, but that you'll take a piece of cake and it's a part of our future that we're going to be preserving. So thank you so very much. And Council President Padilla, I'd like to move, if we could, item 19 up before 12 and 13, because we do have some police representatives that are here to talk a little bit about...
Just make sure with the cake that you don't eat the ridge around.
That's right. Okay. Great. What I'd like to do is call off, call up, excuse me, representatives from our police department to talk about item number 19, which is our closure, excuse me, towaway signs on Satacoy Street. I think, I don't know if Captain Pritchard's here, I'm sorry with the lights, I can't see back there. As he's walking up, many of you know we've had trouble with street racing, both in our community here on Glen Oaks, but also on an area in the North Hollywood community, which is on Satacoy. And we have before us today the ability, hopefully, to post no towaway and no parking signs. And if Captain Pritchard, you could kind of mention why that is so important on this street. And if I could ask all of my friends and community members to be quiet a little bit so we can follow on with the agenda. Captain Pritchard.
Yes, good evening. On Satacoy, I'm not too familiar with what goes on there, however, I am familiar with the Glen Oaks, Peoria, Sheldon area. We have a, an enormously large problem when it comes to street racers. Street racers are drawn from all over Southern California, just to my little corner, which is where you're at now, which is the Foothill Division. We have probably between 150 to 200 cars that mass there. They engage in street racing, spectating, and this pours into the community of Sun Valley, which creates a lot of issues, both traffic and quality of life and nuisance issues from everybody else, not to mention those dangers posed to the individuals who are driving side by side with these individuals. What we propose, and as you have in your special number one motion, it's fantastically constructed, what we need to have is the no posting, the posting of the no stopping towaway signs to first prevent the spectators from massing there, and secondly, to stop the individuals from engaging in the speed contests.
Great, thank you. And I know that we've been able to, on Peoria Street, we have posted those once again towaway, no parking signs. And that when I was out with you all until the wee hours of the morning, that was a wonderful tool that we were able to use. And we thought about Satacoy because I drove home that night, and I live near there, and there were all the other racers who had not got, you know, received tickets or had their cars impounded here and moved over to Satacoy. So I think this will be an excellent, another tool on that street as well.
You know, might I add here that the posting of the no stopping or the no, yeah, the no stopping towaway sewn signs basically will account for about 100 to 110 impounds a night when we have this problem. And so what it does is it keeps everybody from massing, keeps everybody from showing up at this location, knowing full well that we can impound their car at any time. So yes, it's been a highly and widely successful tool here in Foothill, and it would be fantastic knowing the street at Satacoy.
Great, thank you, Captain Pritchard. I know we're going to take item 19, and I have a card from Arthur Sweet, but also we are going to hopefully take special item number one following this as well. So if I can, Arthur Sweet will speak, and then Captain Pritchard, we may have you come up again. We're going to have Art speak, and then we'll have you up again, Captain.
I wish to congratulate the city council members for having a very informative meeting tonight. This particular item is very, very needed for the North Hollywood area that, where you live, Wendy. And basically, we heartily support it. However, we found in the past that when we take such actions, it just moves the activity to a different area, so you're going to have to be on the lookout. The police department will have to be very attentive to prevent such actions from happening in other areas and other streets throughout the San Fernando Valley. So thanks very much for bringing this up, and I'm sure it'll help eliminate a major problem and danger for the people of the San Fernando Valley. Thank you.
Thank you. I know Councilmember Zine would like to share a few words as well.
Yes, I have a technical question on it. According to the item 19, it deems appropriate by DOT Department of Transportation, and it doesn't include any reference to the LAPD. And I think that while DOT will be responsible to post the signs, it should be at the direction of the LAPD, whether it be the Foothill Division or Valley Traffic Division. So I make a friendly amendment to include that.
To have them work together, I think that it would be in coordination with LAPD and DOT together.
According to the item, it doesn't list anything about LAPD, it just says DOT do it, and DOT would be responding to the LAPD request. And what Arthur Sweet just stated, which I think may come up in special one, is when they do scatter to another location, if it can be broadened out to include any adjacent areas that they congregate, but with DOT having the responsibility of posting, not knowing necessarily where they're congregating, whereas LAPD would have that, I would make a friendly amendment to include that in consultation with the LAPD, and at their direction, DOT would carry out that action.
I'd accept that amendment to that item. And I know we have DOT representatives here. Amir, I'm not sure if there's, if it's you or someone else who would like to respond from the DOT's perspective on Satacoy.
Hi, Amir Sadadi with Department of Transportation. Yes, Councilmember Zine, you're absolutely correct, and we appreciate you including that in the amendment. The signs will be going up as soon as, as early as next week. We're trying to fabricate the signs. They're a non-standard sign, so it takes a little bit longer, but as far as item number 19 goes, we are going to be working closely with LAPD in monitoring the area and the adjacent areas, and we accept that friendly amendment as well. I think it's very helpful to us as well.
Great, thank you, Amir. And we found, you're right, Councilmember Zine, we found on the Glen Oaks area that Peoria was not posted, and we found that with the help of LAPD, and now that it's posted. So I think you're right that that coordination. Unless there's further comment, I'd like to ask them to open the roll on item number 19 with the friendly amendment.
Burnson, Garcetti, Grul, Han, Holden, Labange, Misakowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Weiss, Zine, Padilla.
Thirteen eyes.
Great, thank you very much. Yes, and thank you. Forthwith. I'd like to also, we have special, special one, which relates to this issue as well, if we'd be able to call that item and the findings. Our city attorney?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. As we all know, illegal street racing is a serious problem. In order to deal with that problem, several streets were temporarily closed while a permanent solution was being worked out. That solution is still being worked out, and we hope to have that done by sometime in November. And this motion would temporarily close Glen Oaks Boulevard between Sheldon and Peoria beginning September 20th for, it looks like the weekends through November 9th, from the hours of 11:00 PM to 3:00 AM. And therefore, the council need to make the findings that the need to act arose after the posting of the agenda and that there's an immediate need to act.
Vote on the findings.
Burnson, Garcetti, Grul, Han, Holden, Labange, Misakowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Weiss, Zine, Padilla.
Thirteen eyes.
Great, so that item is before us. I'd like to have Captain Pritchard comment on this as well. And I want to take this opportunity as well to thank the Department of Transportation, whose staff were out there for the last four weeks on Glen Oaks. And lo and behold, yes, clap, there's people clapping in the back for the Department of Transportation. But on Glen Oaks on this Saturday night, once again, the street racers came back. I had emails from my constituents at 1:30 in the morning telling me that they were out there again. And so this is another item which we can move ahead on, but similarly, we'll work on the long-term solutions as well. So Captain Pritchard?
Yes, getting back to the problem there with the street racers, essentially what happened was we came up with the idea with the council member's office here to close the Glen Oaks Boulevard, partially taking away the outermost lane with the DOT with backup from the Los Angeles Police Department, which meant we had officers come around and check on the safety and monitor the location. What we had before was a lot of problems, and then with the four-week closure, every Friday and Saturday night for four weeks, we had almost absolutely no problems during the time that DOT was deployed there to stop everything. And essentially, as she said, once the deployment ceased, we started to encounter problems again where the, the street racers started massing. So what we are asking for is an additional eight weeks while we work on a long-term solution. This would be a short-term stopgap as we're looking at working on other things in turn, in conjunction with this. But this would go far to stop the problem and really work for the constituents in the Sun Valley area, basically protecting not only the drivers, but protecting the individuals who are walking in the neighborhoods of Peoria Street.
Great, thank you, Captain Pritchard. I don't know if you have any comments, Councilmember Zine?
Unlike the item number 19, which is a posting of no stopping towaway, when we originally sanctioned this, there was a request that it would be expanded to include a surrounding area where the street racers, for example, they moved from Peoria to an adjacent street. And in the original motion, there was a friendly amendment which was approved, I don't see that in here, to give the department the authority. If they go to another location, then that would also be on there. I didn't see that.
At the bottom, it says, including temporary street closures to immediately stop illegal street racing, an alternative location. So they would have the same authority if they do move to ask, you know, to work with them to close streets where appropriate.
That was the friendly amendment that we still have in there. Great, thank you. So you have that authority?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Very helpful. Okay, if there's no other comments or questions, if you could open the roll.
Garcetti, Grul, Han, Holden, Labange, Misakowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Weiss, Zine, Padilla.
Twelve eyes.
Great, thank you very much. Forthwith, please. Next item.
Item number 12 was called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Colleagues, item number 12 is from the Economic Development Employment Committee. It's a program, a pilot program called Paint is Free. It's something the Community Redevelopment Agency does, and for those folks that are in, these are for council districts, in this case, two and four, who live in the North Hollywood area, this is free paint, literally, to give residential property owners some help in redeveloping the area by bringing their homes up to a higher standard, helping folks out and giving them the incentive to make sure that their homes are not only repainted, but also dealing with graffiti in the area. I just called it special for those folks that are here tonight, because I think when there's a lot of talk about local control of government, we have with the Community Redevelopment Agency a model in which nobody's taxes from here, nobody's taxes from South Los Angeles, nobody's taxes from East Los Angeles, but taxes that are generated specifically in that area go to community betterment. It's kind of local control, or can be local control at its best. Example of where taxes that are generated in North Hollywood are being spent in North Hollywood. This program also exists in other places throughout the valley, other redevelopment areas, as well as throughout the city. And it's really the opportunity in less well-off areas to use tax revenue, not from throughout the whole city, but that would be generated in those places to turn those places around. And I think you hear a lot of negatives about the CRA, but I wanted to put this forward as an example, not only to publicize, to let more folks know in those districts that this is available, but to let the public know about some of the good that the CRA does. I'm sure that Councilmembers Labange and Grul will also have a couple of comments to say on this, too.
Councilmember Labange?
Well, thank you, Councilmember Grul and Mr. Garcetti. Yes, this is very important to have this type of program and want to encourage it, especially in areas that have these particular challenges. I know one thing the department is working on doing, not just for this, is also to do mining programs, to not just paint it out, but green it out with live plants that do grow along walls and make sure that it takes away the concrete target that is there so it doesn't be a repetitive problem. But I just want to thank the Community Redevelopment Agency. Is Lillian Bergenheim here from, do you have anything you'd like to say, Lillian, on the project? You're doing a lot of work out there, trying to support. Some people say, you know, that sometimes we focus on downtown, we focus on downtown. This is downtown North Hollywood. If you haven't been there recently, there's a burgeoning art district there along Lancashire in downtown North Hollywood. And it's kind of exciting to see some of the things happen that are taking place there. And Lillian is the administrator for the Community Redevelopment Agency and talks a little about this program, an area that both Councilmember Grul and I share. And we've tried to take utility right-of-ways and landscape and take away the graffiti targets and the dumping problems there. And I know we made a dog park on the Department of Water and Power's Wittenhall Highway right-of-way. So all those are positives. Give us a little brief on this, if you would, please.
Thank you. For a lot of people, making their house be a safe haven for them is the most important thing. And when you have a very little bit amount of money, you work on what's on the inside. And people driving by don't know that people care about their neighborhood. But when you go and ask anybody what they want to see happen in the area, they always come to those items, like the greening of the, of the right-of-ways, that show that the community cares about itself. So the paint program is a very simple, low-cost way to help homeowners improve their property by painting the outside of it. It just provides the paint and it provides the contractor for them, so the, the painting is done professionally and looks good. And it actually increases the value of their property, increases the value of the neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Grul.
Thank you. Mr. Holden?
I want to reiterate what Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Labange has already stated. This is a good measure. Nothing's for free. The money's coming from tax increment from the redevelopment area, establishing that those respective communities. I think it's important for you to note that. Also, it's important to note that it's in District Four and District Two. You're in District Two now. Whereas it was a pilot program before, it is now decided it's going to be permanent, since it worked so well, for these two districts. And hopefully, we can have this program that began as a pilot program here in this specific area become a program citywide. I'd love to have a program like this in my district. We have three or four redevelopment areas in which we can use tax increment money for this purpose. The graffiti is something we don't want to see or have to live with, and this gives us an opportunity to eradicate it, finally, and once and for all. And I want to congratulate Mr. Grul and all others responsible for putting this item on the agenda today.
Very much, Mr. Holden. As my colleagues have stated, this is an important project and program, and this continuation, and I think really formalizing, it's, it's part of our North Hollywood area is really important. So unless there's any other comments, city clerk, call the roll.
Garcetti, Grul, Han, Holden, Labange, Misakowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Weiss, Zine, Padilla.
Twelve eyes.
Great, next item.
Item number 13 was called special by Councilmember Garcetti. Item number 13 was called special by Councilmember Holden.
Due to the lateness of the hour, we can't continue this item, but we can get through it real fast if you'd like to do it tonight.
Respond. This is an item just allowing, there's a committee report from both Public Safety and Budget and Finance, which is accepting, having the city council accept $100,000 from the state, the state's Alcohol Beverage Control Division, to allow us to hire two specific police officers who will be at the sergeant level, and their job will be, and has been, so this is the sixth year in a row that we have been awarded this grant, to coordinate with each of our local police divisions on those who sell alcohol. When they sell alcohol and get a state permit and also city authorization, they have to do so according to specific rules, in terms of time, in terms of advertising, in terms of making sure that they're not selling to underage. This position allows these two police positions go out throughout the entire city, spot-check, make sure that the liquor owner, the liquor store owners are abiding by all the rules, are clear with what the rules are, they have to go through a class, they have to sign all of these things indicating that they know what the rules are. So the city's program in this has been very, very successful, gotten approval from the state over a number of years to continue operation and to continue to be able to use this citywide.
Mr. Holden, we also have Captain Proctor from LAPD here to make a brief report as well, if that's okay?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Captain Proctor, thank you, and thanks for your patience.
Thank you, and good evening. It's good to be back in the San Fernando Valley. Councilman Holden, you mentioned that you waterskied in Hanson Dam. I don't know how many people remember Pops Willow Lake, but I used to swim there back in the early 50s. I'm the commanding officer of Organized Crime and Vice Division. With me this evening is Senior Detective Rick McElroy, who is really the brain trust and the labor behind this program, which is entering its seventh year. It provides one detective, one sergeant, one sergeant two, and the city supplements with one sergeant two. This program has been recognized across the United States as a model program. The most recent award that it received was from the Mothers Against Drunk Driving, a national award in Washington, DC. It provides seven enforcement programs with three educational programs to our retail outlets. Some of the programs include a minor decoy operation, where because of complaints, we focus on locations where minors are purchasing alcohol, and we send in our minor decoys who make the purchase, and we take enforcement action. We also have an operation called a shoulder tap operation, where locations that are complained of, we send in an underage miner to approach adults outside of liquor stores and bars to go in and buy them alcohol. We take enforcement action on that. We have a K compliance operation, a narcotics paraphernalia operation, a Rule 143 operation. I won't go into all the details of these, but it started with one program, and through the efforts of these two sergeants, it is now seven enforcement programs and three educational programs. It serves the entire city very well. We try to enforce citywide, but we force primarily upon those locations which are complained of. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer that, but it is one of the most effective tools we have in irresponsible sales of alcohol.
Thank you for that presentation. I believe we're still on Mr. Holden's time, followed by Ms. Misakowski and Mr. Zine.
Well, one question is that these two officers are doing an excellent job, and they, of course, encounter on-sale, off-sale, whether there are violations. Do you have any statistical information which indicate how many places we closed up, or how many people they caught violating the law in terms of selling to minors and are other irregularities? Does it vary from the conditions that are imposed on that site for selling, which authorize them to sell alcohol on and off-site?
Yes, I do. We've prepared a brochure that we can hand out to each council member. It's a yearly report that has all the statistical information you might need. However, specifically, you asked, "How many locations have we closed?" In the seven-year period, there have been 63 liquor stores or bars that have been closed because of this problem.
Very good. I think it's important for the public to know, especially those who are here, those who are watching us on television, to know that the police department is out there almost every day, 24 hours a day, to give us some assurance that those who rely on the privilege of selling alcohol on and off sale, under certain conditions, are not getting away with it when they cross the line. So we cannot commend the police department enough for doing a job well done. Two sergeants citywide, that's a real tough task, and you're to be commended for making sure that these places are in compliance. I just, I called this special so it can be noted to the public about the job that you're doing so well. Thank you, Captain.
Thank you, Mr. Holden and Mr. Zine.
Yes, Captain, I have one question regarding the expenditure. It shows a travel expense. If it's a local program, what kind of travel expense are we carrying, and for what purpose?
I'll let Detective McElroy.
Is it traveling, Detective?
Who's involved in the travel, answer that question.
Yes, sir, Councilman Zine, it's a travel that's paid for by the grant to attend the mid-year conference and the beginning-of-the-year conference to get our marching orders as far as how our programs should be run and to receive educational benefits from the Alcoholique Beverage Control on new and innovative ideas that we can utilize for our city.
Are those posts reimbursed at all?
No, this is, well, yes, it's post-reimbursable, but it's also the actual travel expense is paid for by the state through the grant. There's $2,000 or $2,500 a year that is given for us to travel to two different conferences. So it's reimbursable through the grant, the actual training or the cost of the travel.
And do you know how many other cities are involved in a program like this?
There's approximately 20 grants statewide. We're the only city that's had seven consecutive grants in the history of their issuing these grants. Most of them get one every other year, maybe two or three years in a row. We've received our seventh this year, starting July 1st.
And do you do training with the vice divisions or the traffic divisions throughout the city? I know there's only two of you citywide. Do you have programs that you train other personnel within the department?
Yes, we have a video program that we put together with Continuum Education Division that goes out to all patrol, roll calls for them to learn the enforcement aspects of drunks inside of a bar, different minor decoy operations, responsibilities, and things that they can attend to in uniform and still do vice activities at bars. That was done over a year ago. And our unit also developed a 16-hour post-school two years ago that deals with effective strategies with ABC enforcement, and we teach that statewide, along with all of the individual vice officers within our own department.
And does ABC have sufficient enforcement branch now to work alongside the operations?
Well, they're shorthanded, and they're facing a fiscal crunch, and they give us as many people as we can utilize. A lot of them are new, and a lot of them receive, most of their training from us. But they're very helpful, and they do everything we ask them to do, and they're actually, you know, we're supposed to supplement them, but I think it works the other way around because our numbers are greater than theirs are. But they do an excellent job at helping us along, designing our programs, fine-tuning them, and making sure that we're doing the right thing as long as in the alcoholic beverage control arena.
So while the program may not be well-known to the public, it's very effective in eliminating the problems associated with the people who consume and drive and conduct themselves in improper fashion in bars and cocktail lounges?
Yes, they have several programs. The lead program, we developed an alternative program called STAR, Standardized Training for Alcohol Retailers. We just presented two of them today, one to Yankee Doodles in Canoga Park, another to TGI Fridays, where we're doing all their corporate people and all the people that work on the level of service in the restaurants. We've been doing this training for the last two years. It's a program we devised. We would like to see the program even taken statewide, because it brings the alcohol retailer in and educates them. Whenever we go to school, we get smarter. So when we devised this grant, we said we want to educate officers on how to be more effective investigators. We want to go out and help the ABC licensees to be more effective and responsible beverage servers. So that was the gist of the whole operation at that point, was develop both sides and reduce the overall drunk-driving aspects, reduce domestic violence, reduce the areas that gangs hang out, because they typically hang out in bar areas, reduce Part One crimes, because they're typically, 80% of them are introduced or involved in some way with alcohol. So it was very beneficial for the city to develop this program and continue it today, because it deals with quality of life issues and compliance. It's all we're after, is just compliance.
And thank you. And you mentioned Yankee Doodles, is that the one in Warner Center, Woodland Hills?
Yes.
Thank you for visiting the third district on that program.
Yes, sir. And also, I wanted to mention, I learned to waterski and ride a horse in the Division.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Zine. Other members listening to be heard? Mr. Labange?
So I want to support the program, and thank you for applying for this grant and being successful and capturing that. I've been familiar with this program over the years and my work previously as a deputy, and the importance of the Los Angeles Police Department units to do this is critical, to work with the business community, the restaurants, and the establishments, to make sure it's a safer place for everybody. So I want to thank you, and I know, Sergeant, you've been doing this a long time, so you're a very special member of the LAPD, as well as your captain is, but I know, I appreciate for your effort to make the special effort in getting this grant and continuing on the grant. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Other members? Before actually taking the vote, let me just add, if I recall correctly, and I haven't heard otherwise, not only is this program successful from, you know, a statistics standpoint, but from an economic standpoint, it is a grant that we've received on an annual basis, and from the fines, combined with bringing establishments that have back taxes that they haven't paid, and other sorts of outstanding warrants, this program actually more than pays for itself. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, it, they gave us $100,000, we give them back $150,000 in fines that are generated from our fines, from our investigations. And on top of that, in the last seven years, we've generated over $10 million through the Employment Enforcement Task Force for the state of California on cash pays, no workers' comp, and just as you stated, back taxes of some sort, excise tax, sales tax, withholding tax, all the taxes that are in an underground economy that's hidden. And we've utilized all of our resources, brought all those agencies to bear against these problems, and that's why we've been able to have closed over 60 problematic locations in six years, which is pretty good, because I used to do civil abatements, and, you know, closing them took a lot longer. They're very effective, but we are doing 10 a year.
Great, so this program is great for public safety, for quality of life, and it's a good economic investment as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. I believe we're ready for a vote now. Ms. Clerk, please open the roll.
Garcetti, Grul, Han, Holden, Labange, Misakowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Weiss, Zine, Padilla.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item?
Item number 20 was called special, and as much as there are parts from the public, so no traffic.
Great, Mr. President, this is item today before you is regarding the Verdugo YMCA, which was built in the late 1980s. Many of, I think, our constituents have utilized that facility over the years, and it's provided this facility on a long-term, no-cost lease on land owned by the city of Los Angeles. And this has been over nearly 15 years, and they are in the process of wanting to expand that area and is acquiring an adjoining piece of property on which it plans to build a new gymnasium and other facilities. However, the logical development plans require that the new structures to straddle the line between its property and the city's property, and the Department of Building and Safety is not able to issue a building permit that crosses property lines unless the properties have a common owner. So in order to facilitate that, we are trying to explore the possibility of giving that property to the YMCA in order to create that common ownership. And tonight, I'd like to hear a report from the Communities Development Department and General Services about the status of that effort, and we also have three cards from Public Speaker Cards.
Thank you. Gloria Stevenson Clark from the Community Development Department, and I'm reporting here with the General Services Department. I have a brief status report regarding the request for the transfer of the property at 6840 Foothill Boulevard. This city-owned facility, or city-owned land, is actually under lease between the Christina Cunhada YMCA. It's a 50-year lease that the CDD and General Services have both executed with the Y, and it's been in effect since 1987. So there are more than 35 years remaining under that lease. The condition of the lease is that the Verdugo Hills Y provides services in the area of education, recreation, and also cultural activities. And we also have a separate agreement for a loan where the agency has been paying back in terms of services and amortizing out the city's interest. I wanted to just simply report that based upon our review, we found that the YMCA is in good standing with the city and has provided the services to all age groups as required by both agreements. And the CDD has a current valuation method that it has used for programs that utilize Community Development Block grant funds, where agencies, where something like this could be done, the land could be deeded over to, or could be conveyed over to, the YMCA using the amortization at $40,000 per year. And with that method, it would provide services to the city over a 17.3-year process. Our understanding is that a gymnasium would be constructed, and that there would be considerable additional services provided to both young people in recreational and a series of new activities in the area of recreation, as well as an expanded childcare center for about 60 children. And this, we believe, would be a significant benefit to the community. So we will continue to be working with General Services and the CIO to report back on the specific items that need to be in policy issues that need to be taken place, enabling legislation in order to accomplish this action.
And maybe Gloria or the representative from General Services can kind of let us know what the timing is on this item to move forward, and apologize that I don't know your name, so...
Phil Tondro, I am the Deputy Director, Asset Management Division, Department of General Services. Yes, we have valued the property, it's been appraised at $695,000, and with the formula that CDD uses, $40,000 a year, it'd take about 17.3 years to pay that off. In other words, what the Y would be doing is purchasing the property, but rather than paying the city cash, would be providing the services to the community. And we do that by a deed to trust to the Y with a number of stipulations in that deed to trust, so that if they ever stop providing the services or didn't provide the quality of services, if they're being defaulted, the property could be taken back. Or if they ever decided to sell the property with a mortgage, the city would be paid off in cash for what was left. So we've done this before with one other agency, and it's worked out quite well. So what we have to do now is get with the Y, and CDD, and the CIO. The CIO will have to make a finding of public interest and necessity to transfer the property, and then bring everything back to council for a motion to approve the actual transfer of the property. So we're going to move on that forthwith.
Hello, there we are. You know, I think we would like to move as quickly as possible, and you probably hear from the speakers that they've been working on this project for a long time. So I think the message I'd like to send today, and probably my colleagues would agree, is as quickly as possible, if you can come back with this particular item as soon as possible.
Yes, ma'am, we'll do that.
Thank you. And I'd like to call our public speakers at this point, Larry Hall, Tom McCarty, and Nina Royale.
Mr. President, Councilmember Grul, my name is Tom McCarty. I'm a lanius consultant working on behalf of the YMCA, and I want to thank the staff as well as your office for helping us move forward with the plans to expand the existing YMCA. The facility's been operating for the past 14 years at this location under a dollar-a-year land lease, and basically, we have acquired an additional piece of property that allows us to expand the existing facility and to build the gymnasium and also expand the teen center. And I'd just like to introduce the new president and chief executive officer of the YMCA to go into greater detail, Larry Hall.
Thank you, council members, for seriously giving this consideration, and especially... Thank you, councilmembers, for seriously giving this consideration and special thanks to Councilmember Grul and her staff for supporting this action. I think that the YMCA that's been working on this process for a long time is now coming close to the end. We are anticipating as soon as the transfer of the property occurs, putting in about a million and a half in renovations, which also includes a new gymnasium, which was mentioned before, and an expanded team in children programming. But you know, the facility is just a tool. What is more important in this is that we anticipate servicing at least an additional thousand children each year and hundreds more family and that's what's important. And I especially thank the councilmembers for considering this type of partnership. But I think this, I think this is very important for non-for-profits and city government to do these types of partnerships in the future for going to maximize our resources to develop a community that's stronger with stronger children and families. And I'm open to answer any questions if there are any.
Great, thank you. I think our last speaker is Nina Royale, but I'm not Oder Shis.
Good evening. My name is Nina Royale and I live at one zero one one zero Seminole Avenue. I live in the heart of the hood, as my son would tell you. I'm against the Y getting that property. I'm against you giving them any more money for it. They've gotten bond money from Adam Schiff. They got that property for a dollar back in the eighties and to date, I live in the hood, I see no results. These kids are getting nothing. If you've ever seen the price list for the YMCA, it's cost prohibitive. My area, most of them are Hispanics. These kids are hanging around on the streets. There's nothing for them to go to and to be in anything in the Y. It's very costly. In fact, I do have a schedule at home. I didn't think to bring it tonight and I should have done so. I can't afford to belong to the Y. I belong to the Foothill Athletic Club, which cost me a hundred and fifty dollars to join and fifteen dollars a month. I looked into the Y, I can't afford their membership. How is a regular family in my area, which is very, very dense? We have a lot of condos, a lot of apartments and we have a lot of latchkey kids hanging out on the streets. I live across the street from Bolton Hall. It is a passive park with a museum on it. There's nothing for these kids. If you're going to be spending the money, spend it wisely. Do something with this money to keep these kids off the street in after-school programs. There's a church across the street from me that wanted to buy a piece of property across the street and partner with the city to keep these kids off the street and that is not even being looked into. Where the Y is at, it's across the street from the Boulevard, not in the dense part of the town and the kids will not benefit. I wish that you would look into this some more. I am the safety chairman for the Sunland Tonga area. The Ad hoc Neighborhood Council seemed to be certified, we hope, so I am very much aware and I'm also a CPAD member and my colleague Debbie would like to speak also.
Thank you. And we didn't have a card from you, but would you just give your name real quick?
My name is Debbie Statlin and I've been living in the community for over twenty years and I am also questioning why would the city would consider giving a piece of property to an organization that receives plenty of financial specing from local businesses and from grants that they receive from major corporations across the country. They're talking about putting in over a million dollars of renovations. If they've got that kind of money, why can't they pay for the property? Because the city needs the money to balance the deficits that we're facing because of all the problems we've been having. So I would request that the city reconsider this motion because property of that kind of value should not be given away haphazardly to an organization that the majority of people in the area cannot afford benefits from. Thank you.
Thank you. And councilmember, Wendy, can I say one more thing? Real quick, there are no parks up in that area where our kids, that are not passive, so please consider that. Thank you, Nina. Councilmember Zine.
Thank you. I have some questions for the director of the Y and the two ladies that spoke really brought up a point that I want to illustrate. Number one is, I have a Y in my district and there's a fee that they charge considering the proposal where the city would surrender the land and come under your ownership. Are there any components to have open access to those that are economically deprived that can't afford to pay the fees at the Y?
There are two components right now in existence at that YMCA. Some of the property that will be utilized in this development came from CYA, the California Youth Authority, and that has requirements that require us to make sure we're servicing a certain amount of youth in that area for almost no fee at all. And currently, if you look at our membership rosters, you'll find that we're very representative of all population groups demographically in that community. We have financial assistance that's available at every YMCA. That means that they don't have to follow the membership price. It goes upon a sliding fee scale based on household income.
What is the membership and the monthly dues at your Y?
If I were to be asked that right now, I'm sorry to tell you this, but I just came from the Seattle YMCA and I'm now in the LA system and I'm the new CEO. I can get you that exact information. I looked at it today, but I.
Okay. Well, the concern I have is that what the ladies illustrated, we're going to give land to an organization to run a legitimate program, not questioning the benefits of the YMCA. Why do they say they do a great job? But the concern is illustrated by them, but my concern, open access in an area where there are many people that have been struggling to survive with the family and the cost of living, et cetera, and to impose upon them a fee when the city is giving them the property and the value based upon what was earlier stated would go out for seventeen years, the land value, that's a long period of time. And I understand the improvements that are going to be made will be at the expense of the Y. But the concern I have is if we're surrendering property that is currently under city ownership, it's worth a value, what are we going to benefit from that? What benefit will the people in the community have by giving that land to the Y to do the development, the continuing build-out, to afford the opportunity for those that cannot afford, for whatever reason, to attend? And the ladies stated there's problems up there with you with no place to go. Can that be a component where there would be a provision where certain economic household income, they would have free membership? Has that been arranged to any of the Y's around anywhere?
Oh, yes, sir. If you study YMCA's west coast, east coast, midsection of the country, every place that's happening.
Is that proposed here?
It's already a part of the CYA requirement for our assuming the property that we had secured from them and we can easily encompass that into this agreement as well.
And how many would be involved in the CYA? How many youth would you have under that guideline?
If I remember correctly, and I have to tell you that I probably ought to document this with a follow-up, that we're going to be servicing.
Without a fee?
Without a fee, almost any of the youth that are in that area that want our service as long as they follow the guidelines of self-responsibility.
They would not have, there would be, there would be no fee for them?
Yeah, you know, it may not be totally free, but it may be a buck, but I think we're not going to restrict anyone from coming even if they can't afford a buck.
Okay, that's a concern. I know that we have a program at the pools where certain ages are in for free. I know we sponsored LA Bridges program, after-school programs, the LA's Best, which receives millions of dollars in city funds for free after-school programs for our youth to keep them off the streets. And I'm concerned that in that area, which is somewhat isolated, that they have an opportunity to have a facility, which is going to be a state-of-the-art facility, if they can't afford to go in there, you look at this beautiful building and they can't enter because you can't afford to go in. And that's a concern.
Dennis, I'm going to.
So maybe that can be part of the arrangement or the process to create some component that you can make sure that the people in that community will be able to afford the opportunity to go if they don't have the dollars to afford.
That's our mission anyway, so that's not a problem.
Thank you, Dennis. We have two other councilmembers that would like to speak, Councilmember Mr. Kowski and Councilmember Reyes.
Thank you, Councilmember Grul. I would just like to suggest, one, this is just a status report and I think that the concerns that Mr. Zine expressed are appropriate to have a more complete evaluation and not put you on the spot tonight to be able to answer some of those questions, but to have that as part of the evaluation when we look at it. I am familiar with some of the other YMCA's. I was lucky enough to represent the area where the Mid Valley YMCA was in the heart of Van Nuys. And although it owns its own property, we also looked at some cooperative programs in the city and allowing them to take over some additional property and do some landscaping, do some gardening programs. But as a major component of that, there was a real close association with the Mid Valley Y in Van Nuys and the community and making an awful lot of programs available for families who could not afford the full fee system. There's an incredible scholarship program, there's an incredible other opportunity where all economic levels in that community, in the heart of that community, were able to partake with the Y. So I imagine we, I know that it is part of the Y's overall mission, but I think specifically as we spell that out and look at it and see in this particular area, what kind of outreach, what kind of participation you have in some of those other levels and all the other kind of programs that are available, should be brought forward and made a part of the report that the Community Development Department will report back as we report on this, just to have that, those questions answered because I think they are valuable and valid ones. But as I say, knowing some experience with some of the other YMCA's, particularly the one in the Van Nuys area, it has done a tremendous job with that kind of outreach and making its services available to others in the community.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know in other instances, when we worked with the Community Development Department, I've been reading your report, what's anticipated is the estimated number of three hundred youth participants for these activities annually and approximately sixty children for the expansion of the childcare. What I would like to suggest is a friendly amendment in the next report, that we can establish criteria so that there is a performance standard by which we ensure that access to low-income folks within the area truly are participating and we can have a record-keeping system, a report, that lines up with the funds that are being considered by the city just so that we can have a performance standard, we can have criteria, and we can ensure accessibility knowing that should equal the amount of funds and/or the mission, not to question the YMCA or the CYA or whatever other programs you have, but it re, as it emphasizes the notion of accountability and making sure that accessibility and openness to all incomes are truly made available. And if we can weave that through the various departments as we go through or committees as we weave through the process of finalizing this understanding. So I would suggest that as a friendly amendment and allow the appropriate committees to review it accordingly, to make sure that the language is in place, criteria is established, performance standards are recognized, a reporting system in which we can guarantee access.
Good, thank you. Thank you. After Tom, Katrina Canyon also had a public comment and then we'll close the item.
And actually, I just wanted to respond to some of those, some of the comments. Most of those programs and scholarships and subsidies are already in place and we're happy to document that when we come back.
Hello, my name is Katrina Canyon. I live at nine four five five Hill Haven Avenue. I've been a member of the Y for nine years since I moved to Sunland to Hunger and I don't know how, how active their outreach program is, but there was a point where I couldn't afford to pay for the daycare for my child and the Y helped me out and I managed to have daycare for my child during the time where I couldn't afford it. I just wanted to add that comment in there.
Thank you very, thank you very much. I believe this concludes public comment on this item. Are there other members wishing to speak? Councilmember Grul?
I think we've heard some good comments today and some dialogue that the Y and our General Services Department and CDD can come back with addressing some of the concerns raised this evening when this item comes back again. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please open the roll.
Garcetti, Grul, Han, Labange, Mosakowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Weiss, Zine, Padilla.
Eleven eyes.
That matter is approved. Next item, please.
Item number one, excuse me, item number twenty-one, called special by Councilmember Grul.
Ms. Grul.
Just briefly, I'd like to have the department, CDD, come up and talk about the revitalization of Commerce Avenue. Many of my constituents here and owners on that street remember when there was funds identified last year or prior to that for the revitalization of Commerce Avenue and due to reprogramming last year and lack of representation, that money was taken away. And so one of the first things I did was introduce a motion to restore those funds to begin the process of looking at how we could revitalize Commerce Avenue. And I would like to, the request for proposals went out and just have the department give a brief update for all of us here and also the community on the Commerce Avenue revitalization project.
Thank you, councilmember. My name is Clifford Weiss. I'm with the Community Development Department, Industrial and Commercial Development Division. I'm very pleased to inform you that following a competitive procurement process, the city will be awarding and executing a contract within the next five to seven working days with a firm, Jonathan Goldhill and Associates, for an economic development study of the Commerce Avenue Commercial Corridor. It's Commerce Avenue between Valmont and Foothill Boulevard. This is thirty thousand dollars of community development block grant funds have been allocated for phase one of the economic development study. Phase one will include detailed assessment of the area that currently is using demographic data, onsite analysis, review of city agency programs in the area, including building and safety information, planning department, Community Development Department, CRA. The priorities for this phase of the study, along with looking at the area and assessing its current status, current needs, will be identification of community concerns, identifying a lead organization and lead business entities within the area, identifying community leaders in the area and organizing the business community. And then they'll be developing a plan to roll into phase two and phase three of the study.
Thank you very much. Before beginning council discussion on this item, let me just acknowledge that we have received zero speaker cards on this item, so we shall be the public hearing satisfied. Members wishing to be heard, beginning with Ms. Grul.
Well, just I appreciate that comment and know that the consultant will work closely with the merchants on that street to see how we can work together and my office would be more than happy again to participate in that process and identify other resources. We are hoping in our reprogramming in the next month or two with our CDPG, we'll be looking at restoring some of the funds on a number of levels, including this, to provide additional resources in the amount hopefully of fifty thousand dollars or greater. So we hope to continue that and appreciate the department's participation and hope that you'll meet some of the people here today from Commerce Avenue and our wonderful, I think, icon there of the Sunland Tonga area. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Item twenty-one.
Garcetti, Grul, Han, Labange, Mosakowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Weiss, Zine, Padilla.
Eleven eyes.
That matter is approved. Next item, please.
This is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Ms. Grul.
Great, we have several cards here and would like again to just remind everyone we have a two-minute limit and appreciate you all being here and patiently waiting for the public comment period time. I also have a number of my staff that are here, so if there's some specific issues that you have relative to problems in your neighborhood, if you mention them briefly, my staff will go up to you afterwards and get further information so we can address it quickly and as soon as possible in your, in your community. So the first, I'll call up the first three as well. Steven Struthers, Kurt Shasker and Joe Lozano. Steven, please, go ahead.
Steven Struthers, nine eight three one, Sunland Boulevard.
Do you need to pull up the microphone so we can hear you?
Okay. Nine eight three one, Sunland Boulevard. The Latuna Canyon homeowners were successful a couple of years ago in getting commercial truck traffic taken off Latuna Canyon, which was probably pretty good for them, but it had the effect of doubling the heavy commercial truck traffic on Sunland Boulevard and we have several large commercial transportation companies in Sun Valley that use Sunland Boulevard, you know, to access the Two-Tent Freeway. The road needs extra care because of this extra traffic. There is a dangerous curve in the ninety-eight-hundred block and it's also really broken up and I'd like to propose possibly considering rerouting the heavy traffic to Sheldon Street, which is much less used, way less residences and also the horse trail on Sunland Boulevard is on. also, the horse trail on Sunland Boulevard is almost unusable because of the traffic speeds and the proximity to the horse trail. One last consideration is on the southbound Sunland Boulevard between the 210 and up to at least Wheatland, maybe lowering the speed limit to 40. One of the curves is marked 40, but the, the rest of the street's 45, and the average traffic flow, everyone feels like they can exceed the speed limit by 5 mph. So really, it's like 50-plus. So that was my issue. Then I'll take up the cogos.
Great. Pat Davenport here will, will take the information. And your comment about Sunland Boulevard and speeding is very much on our radar screen, so to speak, because transportation has been working there and the LAPD, so.
Yeah, the officer, patrol officer who's working there is really working his tail off, and he probably has one of the most dangerous jobs in the LAPD, because trying to get out in there and pull people over is really impossible, because there's no parking along that street. It's mad.
Wonderful. Well, Pat, Pat was already starting to write down some of your issues, so look forward to working with you. Mr. Shasker.
Hi, Kurt Shasker, 11473 Christian Lake Uterus. I took this, I'd like to take this time. By the way, I never waterskied at Hanson Dam. Never rode a, never rode a horse here. But I do live here. And I thought I'd take a moment to talk a little bit about fire issues. Major fire issues are so rare that they maybe only occur once in a lifetime, so we get a little lazy about it. It's my experience or my idea that the city of LA does not take it seriously. As an example, Ms. Gru, you may, excuse me, Councilmember Gru, you may not be aware, but if LA County rules applied where you worked, to your office, you'd be in violation. And in fact, every homeowner in my neighborhood would be in violation of LA County rules. They're small violations, but in total, the net effect is going to be, this whole neighborhood will go up in smoke in a 50 mile an hour plus and a wind condition fire. That's just the way it is. And it's unfortunate, it doesn't have to be that way. So I'm just simply asking that in the future, in the next weeks, months, I'm going to try to find some time to get some of your staffers together, that who have Mountain Fire District constituency, maybe spend some time with me, and I will show you a better way that we can go about fighting this issue, dealing with this issue. A little more up to date.
Right. That would be wonderful. We'd appreciate that. I appreciate you coming tonight. Thank you very much. Mr. Lozano.
Good evening. My name is Joe Lozano. I am sort of a stranger here. I'm from Mission Hill. I'm in District Seven, so I'm sort of invading, but I don't think you'll mind. I was hoping all of you council residents wouldn't run out on me. I guess you save the best for last, right?
That's right.
That's it. Gentlemen, I don't know if you've seen the paper, but we have a real big problem. They're called gangs. They outnumber the police department 20 to 1, right here. So you council people better start thinking about this very seriously. I know Mr. Zain does. He's an ex-police man. So we need to address this problem at the city council, downtown Los Angeles, or wherever, and get it taken care of. We are, we cannot be outnumbered. I was alarmed. I don't scare easy, but this alarmed me. This woke me up a little bit when I saw this in the paper. There's only a very small section that doesn't have gangs. Some of them even named after my own nickname. Alarmed me enough, but that's a whole different issue. Get ready, folks, for another war. We're fighting terrorists all over the world, yet we can't take care of what we have here. This is alarming. This is a wake-up call, you know. Never mind the terrorists, we've got to take care of this problem right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Han, would you like to make a comment?
And say you're absolutely right, that in Los Angeles, we have a serious gang problem, and we're all hoping that the next chief of police makes that a priority, to have a comprehensive plan to deal with the gangs in Los Angeles. It's tough to deal with the gang members who are hardcore gang members, although we need to do things to work on that. And sometimes gang injunctions work to take back neighborhoods. I think we ought to spend money on the front end, because gangs depend on membership and recruiting, and that's why it is so important for after-school programs, because the most critical time of the day is between 3:00 and 7:00, and that's when our kids are vulnerable to being attracted to gang members. I also think we ought to start early, fourth grade, and teach our kids how to stay out of gangs. We ought to have programs in every school, in the, in the LA Unified School District, that teaches our kids to stay out of gangs. And we've got to start now to prevent kids from joining gangs in the future.
Recruit them into the Marine Corps.
Councilmember Zain, and then Councilmember Reyes.
Thank you. Just one correction. I did leave as a full-time member of the LAPD, but I'm currently a reserve officer with the LAPD, continuing that service for the public safety. As far as the gangs in the valley, in the city of Los Angeles, there's no question that they intimidate neighborhoods, and in some cases, they even intimidate the police officers. And with the rebuilding of the LAPD, as we see now, with the increased classes at the police academy, with new leadership in the LAPD, they're going to have the numbers and the strength, and they're also going to have the encouragement and support to do the job they need to do. And I also support the after-school programs, which are critical, but the problem is clearly out of control. And if we look at the number of homicides that are taking place in the city of Los Angeles, we're over 400 at this particular stage, and 2/3 of them are gang-related. So we know there's a serious problem citywide. Some people always think it's in South Central or the east part of town, but this epidemic is citywide, including the San Fernando Valley. We have gang injunctions that are imposed upon certain neighborhoods. I have one in my district in Canoga Park, and in this past weekend, we had three shootings and two dead people because of the gang activity. The Valley Bureau has an aggressive gang program. They don't have sufficient personnel, but we are well aware of it. We're doing what we can with the current resources, and fortunately, those resources are increasing, and the police officers have greater confidence in their leadership now to get the job done, to do what we need to do to maintain tranquility in our neighborhoods. But the community up here in the Foothill Division has been plagued with gangs, the community of Devonshire, West Valley, Van Nuys, and you can see they're tagging all over the place because they mark their territory. So we are well aware, our police department is being rebuilt to address that, and I appreciate your comments on it, because that Daily News map of those gangs, identifying them, was not an eye-opener for me, because I was well aware of it, but it's an eye-opener for the public. And I know that we are addressing it with the resources that we have. And again, we are increasing those resources.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know it's a long night, but I was trying not to speak again. But bottom line is, unless we find these young people jobs to complement public safety, we will not have a chance. The driving force in many of these gangs is the drug trade, and we need to come to grips with that as a city, as a community, our ability to address their diversion, either through athletics, some kind of distraction, riding horses, dealing with the kind of alternative that gets them away from the gang culture. The sun economy here is driven by drugs. We allow poverty to fester, drugs fills the void. They fight for territory. The markings you see is not only about a gang name, it's about who's to make the most money out of those that they prey upon. And that is a multifaceted approach that we need to work on, is just not putting people in jail. We right now spend more money in prisons in this state than we do in schools, and that's a sad statement in our society.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Reyes. And I agree with you, and someone who helped to create the LA's best program, which is again trying to reach kids at elementary school, and we just opened up, and you may have seen in the paper, a skate park in Sunland to Hunga. And you should have seen all those kids that were there that didn't fall like I did. Janice Han has to credit, she also had a skate park opening and, and didn't fall. So, but anyways, those kinds of things we need to continue to focus on, which is preventive, and I think you, my colleagues agree on that. I'd like to move on to public, the remainder of public comment. George Wetzel, Mr. and Mrs. Thornwigan, and Mark Dodel.
My name is George Wetzel. I live at 10800 Kurt Street, which is at the end, the west end of Kurt Street, right up behind the building here. I want to commend you, Wendy, for sending me this mailer. And item number 10 on there says, "Help Fight to Force Federal Government to Cease Dumping Cleanup in Hanson Dam Lake." If we didn't have that Hanson Dam lake, I would have probably lost my house two years ago. We had a fire which came right down within, well, I live on the other side of the street. The fire was across the street from me, right down to the backyards. We had seven water-dropping helicopters and two superscoopers bombing that fire, and they got their water from the Hanson Dam lake. If they would have closed that lake with debris and so forth, we would have probably lost our home. And then the other thing I want to come in on, after that fire, we had fire came from To Hunga, down sandbagging the hill for the preventative rain and possible mud that came down. Street Department put K rails in, diverting the mud and water out into the street. And the very same day they finished laying the K rails and putting 4,000 sandbags up there, it rained. It rained hard. We had four feet of mud in the cul-de-sac, tacking down right to my driveway, which is four houses down. It took street maintenance about 30 trucks to get it out of there within about a month. And all this time, anybody that comes up there stirs up the dust, stirs up the mud, dirt flies everywhere. If you have to live in that, it's terrible. So after the winter was over, street maintenance came out, took the K rails away, and we still got the sandbags with the diversion tunnel coming down to the street. The next winter, which was this last year, we didn't have as much rain, but it built up the mud in that diversion channel and out in the cul-de-sac again. It took street maintenance time to clean it up again. About 15 more truckloads of mud hauled out of there. And in the process of doing it, the little catch reservoir behind there was bulldozed down. It's no longer effective. The curb, the sidewalk, and the cover, the drain does not work, and it is tore up, and it has not been repaired.
And I'd like to, I'd love, I mean, I think it's an issue that we have had some concern about in the Tonga wash and the potential rains. And, and Pat stepped up over here, Pat Davenport, I don't know if you know Pat, but Pat is our representative up here, and if you would, you know, chat with her, and we'll make sure that we begin to look before the rain happens again this year. Thank you for being here.
With El Niño, you know, we expect more.
Great. Thank you very much. I don't, our next speaker then is Mark Dodel, because I don't see Mr. or Mrs. Thornwigan. Mark?
Hi, I'm Mark Dodel, and I live at 10719 Irma Avenue in To Hunga. And I wanted to talk about pack rats. I live next door to a pack rat. His yard at times looks like Sanford and Son. I can only assume that he enters and exits the house through his bedroom window, so I can only imagine what the inside of the house looks like. So this presents several problems. Not only is it a fire hazard and fire danger in that area, it's also unhealthful, and because of it, we, I and my other neighbors have started getting rodents. And so I called the fire department, and they came out, and when I called them to find out what they did, they told me they sighted him, and that they had been out there two years earlier, and they had sighted him then. And so I said, well, what is going to happen the next time you come out? And they said, well, we're going to sight him again. So I got the picture, and I decided that if anything had to be done, I was going to have to do it. So I started calling every agency in town, including the mayor's office. And I have to tell you, there is very little energy or resources put to this problem. Not only is it due to the problems that I mentioned, but it has also impacted the entire neighborhood in terms of beautification and, and city pride. I called the health department, and their solution was to come out and give me rat poison.
Well, and Mr. Dodel, we, we had a pack rat situation in another part of my district, and we worked with the fire department and, you know, did some mediation with the, the actual owner of that building at home, and were able to, you know, again, and so I think that I'd love to have you meet Arturo over here.
I would just like to mention one other thing. In my research, I found out that the fire department has something they call the pack rat unit. I don't know if any of the councilmen know about this, because it's a pretty well-kept secret, but not that quite, because the pack rat unit consists of one fire chief, inspector rather, who does this part-time in addition to his regular duties, and he has 600-plus clients. This is all the resources the entire city puts on this problem.
And I was made aware of that as well, when I met the chief, the only person responsible, and have asked my staff to repair and work with my colleagues to see if we can find additional funding for that, because it continues to be a problem. So I hope that, you know, you haven't given up, and that if you could talk to Arturo and get the location, and we'll do more outreach and try to help.
One other thing is that the city has twice in the last two years cleaned up this guy's yard at tremendous cost to all of the taxpayers, including you and myself.
Yeah, appreciate that. Thank you so much. Our next speakers, Mr. and, I'm sorry, Mrs. Bradford, Dee Lunig, Jose San Miguel, and Diana Dixon Davis. Are any of those members present? Mrs. Bradford? Is Mr. Bradford here?
I'm waiting.
Okay, is this, is Mrs. Bradford here? No? Okay. Dee Lunig? That's, okay.
Good evening. Sunland to Hunga. How often did I hear the word "open spaces" tonight? Open spaces? Well, let me request that when, and if the city council votes on the property at Fenwick and Woodward, would they please also remember, "open spaces"? And another gentleman held up this list that we received from the council office, and I'd like to make, or I have an extremely important addition that I would like to see. The residents of Sunland to Hunga neither want nor need cameras at intersections on Foothill Boulevard. Foothill Boulevard is our only way out of town to our employment, because there are no jobs in Sunland to Hunga unless you are a mechanic, a drug dealer. Hope the following does not insult anybody, but pimp or employee of said pimp, we also have to leave town for medical care, higher education, and a myriad of other goods and services. So I ask that nothing, whatsoever be done to add stress or impede the flow of traffic on Foothill Boulevard. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jose San Miguel?
Good evening. My name is Jose San Miguel, and I am part of the, a couple hundred runners, especially in the area of Hanson Dam. And beside them, I represent the people, the poorest people in the area, which is afraid to speak, which is afraid to come because they think you're going to retaliate against them to protest, or, or, I'm sorry.
Uh-oh. You're right, okay.
Yeah, the people who is afraid to speak because they think they're going to, you're going to retaliate against them when you present petitions. So this is the reason I am here in front of you, because I saw the need to help these people, the poorest people, especially in the area of Pacoima and the surrounding areas. It's an area where over 2,000 people comes to job, to run with their family, with their kids, kids and ladies come all working very, very harmonically, and with a lot of harmony between us. We know all the road riders, we work together, we agree in many issues, but most of all is the, the area is being neglected so bad, especially close to the golf course. It's about 50 containers, blue- It's about 50 containers, blue containers, where they collect the trash. No other park collects trash. Families just across, about the distance you are right now, come with their kids to play. It stinks. I have hundreds of pictures. I brought in this issue to Mr. Burman's and to different offices, but haven't done nothing.
Well, I would love to have you talk to Arturo over here, Gonzalez, about that so we can follow up with you on that item.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Diana Dixon Davis?
Good evening, I want to thank all of you for still staying, and my name is Diana Dixon Davis, I live in Chatsworth. And actually, I was going to bring up the skateboard parks, I think it's wonderful that we're finally opening a few, it keeps the kids off the streets and out of trouble, and I know the business owners will be thrilled. I wish there was a skateboard park at every major park in the city, and I really think that you get a lot of bang for your bucks if you do that. But secondly, I want to bring up the issue of curfew laws. Right now, we're having, you know, right now, anyone under the age of 18, even if they're married or have children or whatever, are not allowed to be anywhere on the streets of Los Angeles after 10:00 PM. That's 365 days a year. And in my community, we've had several problems of police officers actually going into business establishments and arrest, carding the children there, the minors, everyone there, and anyone who's under the 18 is arrested for a curfew violation. Now, that costs $141, the student loses a day at school, you have to go to court, the parents lose a day at work. And yet, for what? There's no problems in the community. For instance, one boy, his 22-year-old brother took him to buy an ice cream cone at Baskin Robbins this summer, and a police officer went in and arrested him because he was under 18 and was at 10:30 at night, 11 o'clock at night, on a, on a hot summer evening. And I thought, I thought that was really outrageous. A second case, a police officer went into a video arcade, there have been no complaints, everyone under the age of 18 was arrested and given a curfew violation, even if the student, a minor who was going to be 18 the next morning, was still given a curfew arrest citation. And frankly, I think there needs to be some changes in these, in the curfew law, I think there needs to be some reasonableness. For instance, grandparents, aunts, uncles, and adult siblings would be allowed to pick up children, minors, that they, also that the law be modified so that on the weekends and in the summer, that at least perhaps students, minors can go to the movies. Right now, technically, police officers could go and pick up 3,000 to 5,000 kids if they hit every multiplex in the city because they're all, many of the movies are designed for children, or for the minors, for the teenagers. I also think there needs to be, that you can allow a parent of another, of your, one of your son's friends to pick up your child. I think there seems to be, there needs to be some modifications so that our students, our minors are able to attend movies, theatrical events, go to school events, and not be afraid of being arrested for curfew violations because they're out past 10:00 PM and they're not at home or with their parent.
Thank you very much for being here.
Can you respond to this at all?
Well, I think it's, because it's during the public comment, and I think we have members here of our Public Safety Committee that can review that item as well and take that into consideration. Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you very much. This concludes public comment for today's meeting. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Motions for posting and referral.
Motion should be posted and referred.
That clears the desk, Mr. President.
Are there any announcements today? Announcements, members? Ms. Han?
I just got an announcement, but I was just wondering if we, if I or any of the other members might get a copy of the very inspirational poem that the young woman gave at the beginning of our council meeting. It's something I would like to actually look at on a regular basis, so if there was any way you could give copies to us, I think we'd really appreciate it.
I know Katrina, who's still here, would be more than happy to share that with all of us, we'll get you copies.
Okay, good.
Thank you very much. Other announcements today?
Mr. President?
Do we have any adjourning motions?
Mr. President, before we go to the adjourning motions, I just want to take this opportunity to thank all of you here that stayed the long haul for my community making me look good tonight, and for all of the city staff and recreation and park staff for being here this evening, who they work hard every night, so thank you very much. And I said the sound crew who are members of this community and live in this neighborhood, two over here, these two are constituents, so.
Of course, thank you to Councilmember Grul and her entire office for taking the lead on organizing today's meeting. Seeing no adjourning motions and no announcements, I want to thank everybody for coming. This meeting is adjourned.